The Royal Commission is now in session.
Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the fifth day of this hearing of the Royal Commission. I shall invite Commissioner Mason to give the acknowledgement of country.
Thank you, Chair. We acknowledge the First Nations people as the original inhabitants of the lands on which this hearing is sitting. Ngananga, Jokuru, Runku, Kaliuni, Arungu, Kuari, Pa, Chara, Nenanda, Jorda, Mora, Nanginka. We recognise Meijin, Brisbane, Nanana, Ngukana, Nanyi, Mora, Meijin, Brisbane Ta. We recognise the country north and south of the Brisbane River as the home of both the Djerubu and Jagorah nations. Ngananga, Ngurukanta, Nanyi, Karu, Panya, Brisbane River, Nya, Alinjara, Munu, Olpa, Rira, Arungu, Mora, Richa, Jorda, Nenanda, Munu, Kuari, Nenyenyi, Djerubu, Nya, Munu, Jagorah, Nya. And we pay respect to the Gadigal people of the Eora nation. Their land is where the city of Sydney is now located. We pay deep respects to all elders, past, present and future, and especially elders, parents and young people with disability. I'd now like to read the First Nations content warning. This hearing will include evidence that may bring about different responses for people. It will include accounts of violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation of First Nations people with disability. It will also include references to First Nations people who are deceased. If the evidence raises concerns for you, please contact the National Counselling and Referral Service on 1-800-421-468. You can also contact Lifeline on 13-11-14, Beyond Blue on 1300-224-636. Or for First Nations viewers, your local Aboriginal medical services for social and emotional wellbeing support. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Mason. Dr Melafont, I understand that there is an appearance today for the Northern Territory, so I'll invite the Northern Territory to announce the appearance.
May it please the Commission, my name is Jacoby. I appear for the Northern Territory Government and specifically this morning for Mr Tom Lankake.
Thank you, Mr Jacoby. Thank you. Yes, Dr.
Chair, we're getting, Chair, just to let you know, we are getting an echo from the Sydney Hearing Room. Perhaps that might be seen to whilst I'm delivering the opening.
I think perhaps if we just pause for one moment. I'm told that it was actually from Mr Jacoby's end, presumably in the Northern Territory.
Right. Thanks, Chair. We might briefly adjourn after the opening to just do a double sound check. Thank you.
Yes, please go ahead.
Today is the fifth day of this eight-day hearing in respect of criminal justice. Today is the second day of a forensic case study in relation to Winmarti. And we will hear from three witnesses who will be examined about matters which are individual to Winmarti's case and about matters which concern systemic impacts on people with cognitive disability in custodial-type environments. Some of the issues traversed in the evidence will touch on the interplay with the NDIS. And as I said at the opening of the first day of this hearing, there will be a part two of this hearing at which time evidence from the Commonwealth will be heard. I pause to reflect on the use of the word forensic in this context. Those who have had experiences of Royal Commissions will already know and understand the meaning of that word in the context of Commission hearings. Others may not, and so it may be useful for me to clarify. I use it in this sense. The hearing process brings with it compulsory powers, that is, powers to compel witnesses to attend and to answer questions. It permits the Royal Commission to examine witnesses, including witnesses from governments and organisations, about what might have happened in any given case, to seek to get to the root causes, which in turn assist the Royal Commission in developing sound recommendations for the future. It is an important and fundamental part of the work of the Royal Commission that a significant portion of its hearings are utilised in this very way. We appreciate that some people may be unfamiliar with the role of Royal Commissions and so therefore are unfamiliar with the full range of functions, responsibilities and constraints that apply to this and to other Royal Commissions generally. Any Royal Commission, every Royal Commission must take into account the entirety of the terms of reference, not just particular parts, but all of the terms of reference, as we are doing, and to comply with the laws, which is not only the Royal Commission Act, but other laws which impose requirements on the Royal Commission to observe procedural fairness. May I pause to observe that there are many reasons why it is not only desirable but necessary to call witnesses, sorry, to call evidence from witnesses other than people with disability recounting their own stories. Some are parents or supporters and advocates of people with cognitive disability who give evidence in conjunction with and as essential support for the person with disability. Some witnesses are there to provide cultural support to people with disability, as we have seen in the course of this hearing, and so powerfully on Friday. Some are parents and supporters of or advocates for people with disability who risk significant re-traumatisation if they were to retell their story, whether to the Royal Commission or to others. And so hearing from their parents, supporters or advocates, who themselves may or may not have a disability, is a way to ensure that the voices of the person with disability, the voice of the person with disability is heard, to ensure that their voice is not silenced. We have heard in this hearing from such supporters and such advocates as we have at many other hearings. Some are government witnesses who are called to explain policies and practices which are under scrutiny and whose appearance is essential as a matter of law for reasons of procedural fairness and to ensure that the Commission understand precisely what needs to be changed, as well as what is working. Some are representatives of other organisations whose actions are under scrutiny and who also must be given the opportunity to appear and give evidence for the same reasons I've just set out. Some are researchers and experts, who again may or may not have a disability themselves, but whose evidence is necessary to investigate and evaluate proposals to address violence against abuse, neglect and exploitation of people with disability, matters that are at the heart of our responsibilities under our terms of reference. In this connection, our terms of reference expressly identify the need to focus the Royal Commission's inquiry and recommendations on systemic issues. This is of course not optional, it is required and necessary. Some are representatives of advocacy bodies. Again, some are people with disability, some are not, but who nonetheless wish to put their experiences and their proposals to the Royal Commission on behalf of the many hundreds sometimes, thousands sometimes, of people with disability with who they have worked and who they represent and who they seek to obtain a better life and progress for. If such witnesses were confined to advocates with disability, the witness list would be shorter, but some advocacy organisations would not participate in the hearings. Some are practitioners in education, health, criminal justice and other fields, who again may or may not themselves be people with disability, but whose insights are essential to understand the problems and identify solutions. Some are First Nations people who help us to understand the reality of intersectionality or multiple forms of disadvantage that are expressly recognised in our terms of reference. In this hearing, as with the First Nations hearing, the reality of a legacy of racism and profound disadvantage is abundantly clear. The witnesses who have told us of these matters may or may not be people with disability, but their evidence is indispensable. Another feature is relevant to observe. To state the obvious, not all disabilities are visibly obvious, visibly discernible. Nor are all disabilities visibly discernible or obvious through interaction in a hearing. There have of course been witnesses at our hearings who have disabilities which are not visible or necessarily discernible through the interaction at the hearing, but who have chosen not to have their disability publicly disclosed as part of their evidence. This is their absolute right. This is something which the Royal Commission has and will continue to completely respect. In recent days, there has been information dispersed in the public and it is incumbent upon me to correct something. Recently, there has been a figure proffered by some in public forums that only 15% of witnesses before this commission have been people with disability. But that's just wrong. It's just wrong. The number more closely approximates 22.5%. Plus, when you add in and take into account witnesses who have, because of the features and circumstances I have already spoken of, shared with us the stories of people with disability by necessity through that cause, the total is somewhere more closely approximating the one-third. These figures are likely to be underestimates, given the other feature I've just observed, which is some people, as is their right, have chosen not to disclose their disability. Can I move now to the balance of this week? The evidence tomorrow, that is Wednesday and Thursday, and Thursday is the last day of this part of the hearing, will build on the evidence we have heard so far concerning the importance of early intervention, the provision of disability-appropriate support at all stages of the criminal justice system, including diversionary programmes. And the particular focus on Wednesday and Thursday will be on the cognitive impairment diversion programme in New South Wales, a pilot programme, the funding for which ceases in the middle of this year. In the course of those three days, the Commission will hear from Ms Dorothy Armstrong, Mr Justin Thomas, Mr Geoffrey Thomas, Ms Taylor Button. These are witnesses with lived experience which join the many hundreds and hundreds of voices of people with disability from whom the disability Royal Commission has heard. It need hardly be said that these public hearings represent only a fraction of the information which comes to the Commission and which the Commission will take into account in formulating its recommendations for the future. As I've said, the Commission has had the privilege of hundreds of submissions from people with disability, including people with cognitive disability, as well as hearing directly from people with disability in private sessions. That is, in the forum in which the person with disability has chosen to communicate with this Commission. This choice is one which is absolutely respected by this Commission. It need hardly be said that it is not for any person to seek to dictate how any person with a disability who wishes to share their experience with the Commission should do so. It is not for any person to seek to influence or impose pressure on how people with a disability who wish to share their experience with the Commission. For many, the choice and the ability to speak with their Royal Commissioner directly, one-on-one, in a private session is precisely the manner in which they choose to convey their information to the Disability Royal Commission. Others choose to share their stories with the Commission public. Again, they are choices which are respected by us and for which we are grateful to be able to facilitate. No one wishing to engage with the Royal Commission should feel under any pressure by anything they see or hear in the media, whether it be mainstream or social, that their engagement with the Royal Commission should be in a specific mode. It is up to them. We respect that. None of this should be misinterpreted as indicating that we are not also proactively reaching out to people in closed and hard-to-reach settings. We are very cognisant of the need for this to occur and we are doing so to seek to ensure that we hear the voices of people with disability within those settings as well. The Royal Commission has and will continue to put the voices of people with disability at the centre of its work. And as I have noted, it is fundamental to the work of the Royal Commission and the autonomy of those who choose to participate with it, that the mode in which the person with disability wishes to engage with the Royal Commission is respected and respected fully. We will continue to do precisely that. Chair, the next witness is Mr Tom Lankake, who is giving evidence remotely. Would you, would you like a break for just for a couple of minutes or do a double sound check?
Certainly. Thank you, Dr Melafont, for that opening. We'll take a short break for two or three minutes just to check sound systems and the like, and then we shall resume. Thank you.
Thank you.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned. The Royal Commission is now resumed.
Yes, thank you. Yes, Dr Melafont.
Thank you, Chair. The next witness is Mr Tom Lankake, who is on the screen. You'll find the statement of Mr Lankake at tab six of the, of tender bundle C. And I ask to tender his statement into evidence and for it to be marked as exhibit 11.17.1. Attached to his statements are at tabs four to eighteen of tender bundle E. I ask to tender these documents into evidence and for them to be marked as 11.17.2 through point one six respectively.
Yes, those documents may be admitted into evidence and given the markings Dr Melafont has indicated. Mr Lankake, thank you very much for coming to the Royal Commission in at least a metaphorical sense in order to give evidence. If you would be good enough, please, to follow the instructions of my associate, she will administer the affirmation to you.
I will read you the affirmation. At the end, please say yes or I do. Do you solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that the evidence which you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr Lankake. Just to explain where everybody is, Dr Melafont will be asking you some questions from the Brisbane Hearing Room. Commissioners Atkinson and Mason are also located in the Brisbane Hearing Room. Commissioner McEwan is with me in the Sydney Hearing Room and you are in the Northern Territory. I think that covers just about everybody. Dr Melafont will now ask you some questions.
Thank you. Thank you. What's your full name?
Tom Brian Lankake.
Your current position, please, at the Forensic Disability Unit?
The Direct Services Manager, which was formerly titled the Group Home Manager.
Okay. And you previously were the Acting Direct Services Manager, is that correct?
So I've been the Direct Services Manager since January 2020.
Okay. Thank you. So can I just clarify then, the Direct Services Manager, that was the formal title for that role, Group Home Manager?
It's currently titled the Direct Services Manager, formerly titled the Group Home Manager.
Okay. And do you have a recollection of when that title change occurred?
In the recent months, within the last couple of months.
All right, thank you. And have you been employed within the Forensic Disability Unit since the 1st of February 2017?
That's correct.
Okay. And since that period of time up until, apart from your current role, you've worked as Coordinator, Shift Supervisor and Disability Worker. Is that right?
Yeah, that's right.
Can you help me, Mr Lankake, to understand the reporting line? Who do you report up to? I don't need the name specifically, but to understand the reporting hierarchy above you?
Sure. So my direct line manager is the Senior Manager, who's based in Darwin. And her manager is the Senior Director, which is Miss Cecilia Gore.
Okay. And the Senior Manager in Darwin, is that Senior Manager of the Forensic Disability Unit or more broadly than that?
Yeah, the Forensic Disability Unit.
Okay. Just to let you know, Mr Lankake, sometimes I'll be looking down and it'll look like I'm not looking at you, but I've just got another screen right in front of me and it's a bit of a habit, I'm afraid.
Sure.
One I can't seem to break. Okay. Can I take you, please, to your qualifications? Now, you've mentioned in paragraph six that you completed professional development in applied behavioural analysis. Now, do I understand correctly from your CV that that is, was it a two-week course? Is that right?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. And how long ago did you do that?
Last year in 2020.
And who was it delivered by?
The Institute for Applied Behavioural Analysis.
In Northern Territory?
I believe they're based in the United States.
Okay. So was it an online course?
Yeah, they were interactive webinars.
I see. And was that something at the behest, at the request of your employer or was that a self-initiated study?
Self-initiated.
Okay. Do you know whether for your particular role that you hold, there are minimum qualifications and what they are?
I believe the selection criteria was included with my statement.
Yes.
I'm not sure, I don't believe there's any minimum qualifications that are outlined in that selection criteria.
Yes. And so beyond what's in the selection criteria, you're not aware of there being any additional requirements in order to be qualified for your particular job? Is that right?
Not qualifications as such.
Yeah, okay. All right. Now, you've also done the assessment of risk and manageability of individuals with developmental and intellectual limitations who offend. When did you do that?
I believe that was in 2020 as well.
Okay. And who was that through?
I'd have to check who that was facilitated by.
Okay. Again, was it an online course?
No, that was face-to-face. I completed that course in Darwin.
For how long did the course go?
I believe it was a two-day course.
Okay. And again, was that self-initiated or something that was required by your employer for you to do?
So that was a discussion that I had with my manager at the time, who asked if I'd like to attend that course.
Okay, thank you. Now, you've done the social safety SO Safe training, which we hear about elsewhere in the, in the evidence. When did you do that?
Again, I believe that was 2020 as well.
Okay. And who's that delivered by?
I'm not sure of the person that delivered that training or what the company's called, but yes.
Okay. And can you tell me how long it went for?
I believe that was two days as well.
And I will, I will move off this in a second. I'm just trying to get a sense of this, if you don't mind. And then you did the recognising restrictive practices training. Who is that delivered by?
That was a workshop. It was through the NDIA, from memory.
Was that something your work initiated or you did?
Again, yes, similar. I spoke to my manager and got approval to attend that.
How long did it go for?
That was just a workshop, just a one-day workshop.
Okay. Was that last year as well?
Yes, it may have been 2019, 2020.
Okay, thank you. Now, you mentioned in your statement that prior to joining the FDU, you were a Senior Correctional Officer at the Alice Springs Correctional Centre. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And whilst you were there, you did work at the John Benz Unit, which is a unit for prisoners identified with special needs.
Yeah, so during my time with Alice Springs Correctional Centre, I worked in a number of different areas, but I spent some time working in the John Benz Unit, which is a unit where there's prisoners with identified special needs and any people that are on custodial supervision orders, including Winmarti.
All right. So Winmarti was there when you worked in that unit?
Yes, that's correct.
Do you have a recollection of how long you were there and he was there at the same time? Months, years?
I believe, yeah. So I started in 2010. Winmarti's full transition was in May 2018. That was, so it was approximately seven years.
Right. So you, you're aware that during that period of time, there was the use of physical restraints, that a use of a chair in respect of Winmarti?
I can't recall any uses of a restraint chair, but I have heard people talking about that and in this Royal Commission as well.
Right. So insofar as there may have been use of a restraint chair, you didn't have any positional authority with respect to decisions to use such a restraint?
No. I wasn't involved in any use of restraint chair with Winmarti.
What about chemical restraints? Were you involved in any decision to give him chemical restraints?
Yeah, so in my seven years, I was also given the opportunity to act up on higher duties as a Senior Correctional Officer of the John Benz Unit for a short period of time. So during that, that period, there was chemical restraints in the form of PRN that were administered to Winmarti. The decisions on those weren't made by me though.
Yes. So can I have, get an understanding of the decision to administer the PRN medication? We're talking there about sedating medication, are we not?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Okay. So the decisions to administer such medication was made by a clinician? Okay, so the decisions to administer such such medication was made by a clinician? Is that your recollection?
Uh, there's a a medical um unit of Alice Springs Correctional Centre. Um, and they would be contacted and advised of how um Win Marti was presenting. And they'd make decisions around that.
Can you tell me your recollection of of, say, the 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 minimum level of sen- seniority of clinician who was permitted to um authorise the administration of a P R N at the Correctional Centre?
I'm not sure of that.
Psychiatrist, any recollection?
No, no recollection at all about who, um I know that um the medical unit would be contacted and they would attend and administer P R N medication. I'm not sure who made those decisions.
Alright, I want to move on then. Now, we're we're of course that the Alice Springs Secure Care Facility has been a gazetted facility under the Disability Services Act since uh twenty thirteen, that's your understanding as well?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Yes, okay. Now, you set out in your statement that you understand the role of the facility to be to provide secure accommodation for clients of the forensic disability unit that are subject to custodial supervision orders. That's your understanding?
Yes, so we also have um other clients on non- non-custodial supervision orders. Um, and we provide direct service to those clients um who are at houses in the community. Um, we also oversee a number of other clients who are clients um that have their direct support provided by N D I S providers.
Okay. So there is, um as you've indicated, a role of your uh of the unit, which involves external type services to people. But the facility itself, am I correct to say it can accommodate up to eight people?
Yeah, there are eight rooms there, so that would be the capability.
And is it correct that it currently only holds Win Marti?
That's correct.
And how long has that been the case for?
Um, I believe it was the duration of um the time since he's completed his transition under our full-time care.
Okay, so insofar as you have direct knowledge, you know for sure he's been there since you've been with the F D U since one February twenty seventeen. But your understanding is that he, even for the time before that, he was the only resident of the unit? Is that your understanding?
Okay, I'll just clarify, um so I transitioned to the Forensic Disability Unit on the first of February two thousand and seventeen.
Yes.
Um, Win Marti's full transition didn't happen until May two thousand and eighteen.
Yes, I'm sorry, my my correction, I had my chronology out of out of um whack. Okay, so since he's been transitioned, he's been the only person there?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. So as I go through, Mr Langcake, can I ask you questions? Um, could you let us know what you know from direct knowledge? A- and if it's a belief based on something that somebody's told you, let us let us know that. And if it's something you don't know, also let us know that, so we can get an understanding of what's within your direct knowledge. Okay, thank you. Now, you speak in your statement about the aims of the F D U being to decrease offending through provision of treatment and when necessary, external disability support works. And there being an aim to reduce and eliminate where possible the use of restrictive practices, including transitioning clients from restrictive environments to less restrictive environments. That's your understanding of the aims and goals of the unit?
Yes.
A- and that's been your understanding throughout the period of time you've been there?
Yes.
Okay. Can I take you, please, to paragraph thirteen of your statement? Do you have that there with you? If not, we'll bring it up on screen.
I do.
Okay. There you say that he, that during the weekday day shifts, he gets support from a disability support worker and a shift supervisor. And then you say, and may receive, and this is in the event of a behavioural incident, he may receive an occupational therapist, case manager, coordinators and or group home manager. So who's the group home manager?
So at that time, um of this statement, that was my title. Um, however, it's now changed to Direct Services Manager. So that's myself.
Okay, so we could del- if we wanted to, we could delete the word group manager and say me?
Yes.
Okay. What I'm trying to understand, Mr Langcake, is is why are those supports, that is, from an occupational therapist, a case manager, a coordinator and or yourself only in the event and then and then even so only maybe in an event of a behaviour incident? Why are those supports available?
Okay, so it's a little bit unclear the way that's um written. My apologies for that. Um, all of those people um have contact with Win Marti um throughout um the duties of their their positions. What this is referring to is if Win Marti was to display challenging behaviours, that one of these um staff members may assist with providing direct care and support to Win Marti. Um, often Win Marti displays challenging behaviours such as um self-harm or or targeting staff members or attempted assaults. Um, and they might have to swap out with one of those staff members to assist.
Alright, so beyond that proposition, y- you would agree that that given the aim of the F D U is to decrease offending behaviour through provision of treatment and external support, it's really necessary for Miss uh for Win Marti to have the support of occupational therapists and case managers and coordinators, perhaps yourself, on a continued and consistent basis towards that end? Would be be agreed about that?
Yes.
Okay. This is particularly so, given that he does have complex needs. Are we agreed about that?
Yes.
Right. I would want to get a better understanding um of the staffing. Who decides how many staff you get? And what type of staff? At what level is that decision taken?
Um, as far as how many staff are directly supporting the client on any day?
Well, let's start with staff within the F D U. As a blanket proposition, who makes the decisions about how many staff the F D U has?
I'm not sure um on who makes that decision. I only know um what the staffing model is now.
Okay, so someone up the tree from you?
Uh, yeah, yes, that's right.
Okay. So do you get to have input into the staffing model, that is, how many people you have? Who who they are, what their qualifications are?
I haven't had input in the past around um the staffing model. Um, as far as the the recruitment of staffing, um I haven't had input into the the selection criteria, but I do have input into our shortlisting criteria. Um, and what we would um be looking for with our recruitment process.
Under the current staffing model, which you are obviously aware of, in your in your role there, have you formed a view about if you could have more staff or different staff um position types, what that might be? If you had a wish list as to what you would like to have in that unit in order to best support the aims and goals of the F D U? What would that look like?
I'll just give you um a bit of information about what we do have um already and and the services that we seek um to provide externally. So uh we've got um a number of disability support workers, shift supervisors, um we've got two coordinators, myself as the Direct Services Manager. Uh, we've got a case manager and an occupational therapist based in Alice Springs. We also have a behavioural clinician that's um based in Darwin, but visits um Alice Springs regularly um every month for a week. Uh, there's a senior clinician, um there's a senior manager and there's some other clinical physicians in Darwin as well.
So can I just, um, sorry, can you just go a little bit slow on the last year because we have every we have the positions within the F D U itself. So you've got a behavioural clinic clinician in Darwin. Is that um a psychologist, a psychiatrist, a, do you do you know?
Somebody that's um worked worked in the clinical team, that's done professional development in um behaviour. I'm not sure exactly of um the qualifications. I don't have them handy.
Okay. Uh, do you, okay, alright. Then you said there's a senior clinical person. Do you know what what uh position they hold? Are they a psychiatrist or? Do you know?
The senior clinician's uh psychologist, I believe. Um, there's been some movement in our um, sorry, positions recently, but um that's my understanding. I'm not sure of any other additional qualifications there.
Okay, and then you said there was a senior manager?
Yes, who's um also a psychologist.
And is that senior manager the person you spoke of before as being upwards in your reporting line? Somebody different?
Yes, that's correct.
Sorry, is it the person up in the reporting line?
Yes, that's my direct line manager.
Okay. And you said that the behavioural clinician comes to Darwin about, for about a week a month, is that correct?
So the behavioural clinician's based in Darwin and visitors visits us in Alice Springs um for a week every month.
And what does that person do when they are there? That is, with you? In Alice Springs?
So there's the, yeah, so it's direct observations um of the clients um working on different um behaviour support plans and um liaising with uh internal and external stakeholders about development of latest plans.
Okay, now, to your direct knowledge, has the behavioural clinician ever met and assessed Win Marti?
Um, assessed him in what regard?
Assessed him in terms of his behavioural needs, functional analysis, um medical needs.
Yes, that's my understanding. Uh, the behavioural clinicians met Win Marti a number of times and assessed.
Okay, but uh does that clinician report back to you as to what the clinician has done and found and provide guidance?
I don't have um oversight of the clinical team. That falls under the senior manager and senior clinician. Um, but there is consultation with myself and and other employees at the unit. Um, yeah, so there's there's regular meetings on on different different topics.
So what I'm, when I say report back to, I'm trying to get a sense as to whether or not there is a a direct and clear connection between what the behavioural clinician is doing when is she sees Win Marti and the work of the F D U. So is there a formalised reporting process whereby the information gathered by the behavioural clinician is fed through to you for you to be able to to disseminate to others within the F D U? To capture that information? And to ca- and to capture that um any guidance provided? There is?
We work um closely with the the clinical team um in um development of the behaviour support plans. We definitely receive that information um throughout the process and and when the behaviour support plan um has been completed or updated.
Okay, so I'll ask my question more directly. Behavioral clinician comes out, sees Win Marti, is there a written report back to you and your team in terms of the results um of that consultation with with Win Marti?
Not a written um report as such. Um, yeah, I don't receive reports on on the behavioural clinician visits.
Okay, so it's it's rather, it's an informal discussion? An information exchange? Is that what I understand to be the case?
It it depends on on what the behavioural clinician is is doing at the time and what um she might be focusing on. Uh, that information would be liaised with um any anyone that's required um to have those conversations, um depending on what that task is. So it might be, um if it's um developing the behaviour support plan, that um as I said, we receive that information, um yeah, when that plan's been developed or during that plan.
Is there a written procedural document which requires information exchange as between the behavioural clinician and the staff of the F D U?
Not that I'm aware of.
Has the senior uh clinician you referred to before seen and assessed Win Marti?
Um, she's recently moved into the senior clinician position. Um, she has visited Alice Springs um and met Win Marti.
Okay, so the extent of your knowledge as to her interactions is that she has met Win Marti, is that correct?
Uh, yeah, I'm not sure of the details of that um exactly. She has visited and she's um met Win Marti. I'm not sure of any assessments that she may have conducted.
Okay, so again, there's no written report back to the F D U of the visit by the senior clinician, is that correct?
Yes, that's right.
Okay. Looking at paragraph fourteen of your statement, can you tell me whether those twenty-eight, of those twenty-eight positions, are they part-time or full-time?
Um, all of the um employees at the Forensic Disability Unit are full-time.
Thank you. Only eight of those staff have been there for more than two years. Um, in your position as manager, do you regard staff turnover as being a problem?
Uh, staff turnover and um recruiting and retaining staff is an issue in Alice Springs um more broadly and particularly in um in the disability sector. It's a remote, remote town and a quite a transient place. Um, we do um, we do provide a lot of support um and training um and oversight to our staff, so.
Well, let me come back to to that. But can I ask the question without it being judgment laden, that is, without implying any particular criticism? Does the level of staff turnover make it more difficult for you to you to deliver the services to Win Marti you would like to see delivered to Win Marti, having regard to the aims of the F D U?
Having um new staff members, I think the process that we've got in place is pretty good where we um we have shift supervisors that are generally um more experienced um that are able to to coach and mentor our staff members, but obviously having staff with more experience would be um beneficial to the unit.
What is the minimum level of training or qualifications that a disability support worker has to have in order to be able to work in the F D U?
Um, the selection criteria was submitted um as a part of my um documents that I've I've um submitted. Uh, however, I can tell you about the shortlisting requirement um that we generally use.
Yes, that that would be helpful because we are truly trying to get a sense of what's the minimum level before somebody gets to come and work in the F D U?
Yeah, so when shortlisting, um we um we shortlist based on experience working with complex clients who We shortlist based on experience working with complex clients who display challenging behaviours. Um, as well as experience working with Aboriginal people, um, sound, written and oral communication skills. Um. Um, and uh what's desirable is a certificate for an disability as well.
Okay, so that's a desirable.
Oh, sorry, sorry, I'll just add to that, um. And generally, um, the shortlisting criteria, what, as well as that, that have a minimum of two years' experience as a disability support worker.
Okay, but are they desirable criteria or mandatory?
Uh, that is to put foreign disability.
Yes.
It's desirable.
Yeah, okay, and so i- in practice, does it, does the shortage of um staff from which to recruit mean that? You are sometimes employing people without a certificate for and, and or without the two years' experience?
Um, I can't comment on, on recruitment processes that have happened in the past before, um, before I've been in that position. Um, but my understanding of everyone that's been hired since then has, has met um the two years' experience. Not always the certificate for a disability or similar, um, but the rest of the, um, the shortlisting criteria is.
Right, and uh from, your statement refers to the fact that agency staff are sometimes used. What process is there to, to check to make sure that the agency staff has? Um, the minimum criteria that the employed staff would need? Is there a check and balance for that?
I'd have to um take that question on notice, um. What I can tell you is that I'm aware that they have certain criteria that their staff members need to meet. Um, and that, um, in respect to Win Marty, um. We partner experienced staff members with um any non-experienced staff members, if that was the case. Um, generally with uh agency staff, they wouldn't be utilised with Win Marty unless there was an emergency. Um, we would move, um, staff members that are working with other clients to work with Win Marty. And the agency staff would work with the other client due to his, um, complex needs.
Right, but you'll take on notice the question I've asked?
Yes, if that's okay.
Thank you. Can I take you to paragraph sixteen, please? How long is that positive behaviour support training? How long does it go for?
Um, the, which one are you referring to, the general or the one specific to Win Marty?
General.
Uh, the general positive behaviour support, I believe that's a, a day training.
Provided by?
One of the clinical staff members.
Well, um, and who do you regard as being a clinical staff member?
So we've got two, um, local clinicians, the case manager and the occupational therapist.
Okay, so what's the case manager's uh clinical qualification?
Uh, I don't have that information unfortunately.
You take that on notice for me, please? Will you take that on notice for me, please?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, all right, so either the occupational therapist or the case manager delivers that training and it's a one-day training? And is it a once, is it a once-off training?
Um, ideally that training should happen um annually, that's my understanding.
Okay, but does it? Or is that outside your knowledge?
That's outside my knowledge, I'd have to check um the training records.
Okay. Because the question I'm going, going to ask you is, how many of these staff, or do all of these staff that you've listed in paragraph fourteen? Have all of their annual competencies? So can I ask you to take that one, one on notice, please?
Yes.
Thank you. In respect of sub-paragraph B, the positive behaviour support. Is that a once-off training provided to new staffs?
Um, no, the positive behaviour support for Win Marty, um, is something that is part of the induction process. That um training package is renewed with the new behaviour support plan or the amended behaviour support plan, I should say. Which happens annually, um, and then that's delivered to staff members um annually.
Okay, how is competency in respect of the positive behaviour support? For Win Marty assessed by you?
So there's direct observations of staff members by um shift supervisors, the clinical team. Um, and other um management team members. Uh, we also have regular team meetings where um formal supervision. Um, is completed during those meetings, um.
All right, so, but in, in respect, in respect of specific um assessment by you. To insu- to satisfy yourself that a particular staff member um is able to deliver. The intention of the positive beho- behaviour support training, do I take it there is none?
You mean a specific assessment tool?
Yes. Okay, so, so you rely, do I take it upon? Um, what sh- shift supervisors may or may not tell you about how the staff are going with respect to delivering services to Win Marty?
Not just the shift supervisors, there's um clinical team members and myself and coordinators that. Um, have direct um supervision at times of staff members.
Okay, a- and the, again, the clinical team, we're talking about the case manager and the O T. Your coordinators, wha- wha- what are their qualifications?
Um, I don't have that information in front of me, but I can take that one on notice if that's okay.
Okay. Do, do you know the extent of their own clinical training and thus ability to discern? Whether staff members are actually able to deliver this positive behavioural support? Is that something you're aware of?
They've completed similar um courses as the other staff members have. Um, there's, one of the coordinators has a number of years' experience, um, working with Win Marty. Um, who used to work at Alice Springs Correctional Centre as well. Um, so they're there Monday to Friday, so they've got a lot of um contact with Win Marty and staff members. Uh, and there's a number of bands for our staff members to follow, um, the be- behaviour support plan and. And other plans, um, so that's something that enables us to be more consistent with the delivery of care. And support to Win Marty.
Right, so I'll return to my question, which is, do you have specific knowledge of their clinical training? Coordinates.
Um, any clinical training that I'm aware of specifically.
Then if we go to sub-paragraph C, person-centered support package.
Um, again, that's delivered by one of the, the clinical staff.
Okay, and by clinical staff, that means the O T or the case manager?
Correct.
Okay, and how is, um. Sorry, is there any formal assessment of how the staff? Um, have, have picked up or not picked up the competence expect, expected to be delivered as part of that person-centered support package training?
Uh, not that I'm aware of, no, no tool as such, um, direct observations and, and um formal supervision during meetings. Um, but no actual tool that I'm aware of.
You, you've used the word formal supervision a couple of times, I want to understand what you mean by that.
So during um meetings, we discuss a number of different topics, um, and give people an opportunity to share experiences. And, and talk about how we can um upskill people or, or support people to, to perform their duties. So that's, um, that's a part of a structured meeting that we have, um, we have team meetings quite regularly.
So which clinicians are at that meeting?
Um, it depends on, on the day, but generally there would be, um, one of the clinicians, the occupational therapist or the, the case manager.
But, but sometimes neither?
That may be the case.
So sometimes, sometimes there are these meetings which are intended to provide supervision. But for, in respect of which there's no person with clinical training providing feedback and interchange with the staff, is that right?
In respect of which there's no person with clinical training providing feedback and interchange with the staff, is that right? Um, clinical tra- what are you referring to with clinical training that would be relevant?
I'm using it in the same way you're using it, that is, your occupational therapist or your case manager.
Yeah, so I'll be present at all of those meetings, um, yeah.
But you're not a clinician, sorry, sorry, Mr. Lane, you're not a clinician, are you?
No, I'm not.
Okay, and you don't have formal, I'm not being critical, but you don't have formal clinical training, correct?
Of, yeah, just the professional development that I've done.
Yes, okay, so the, so if I understand your evidence correctly, within that list of twenty-eight people. The only staff who definitely have clinical training are the occupational therapist. And, and perhaps the cli- case manager. Plus or minus your coordinators, is that right?
Yeah, on occasion, there may be a senior clinician or senior manager that's present, but generally speaking, that's correct.
Right, and on those occasions where you might have this, the senior clini- clinician or the senior manager there. Is there, does that involve a formalised process by them of reviewing the records? In respect of Win Marty and providing formal and structured feedback about how to make things better? Or is it more of a chat?
All of the meetings, um, are documented and if there's any outcomes, um, or identified training needs, they're assessed during those meetings. Um, so they're documented and they're, they're distributed to, um, the staff members, all of the staff members in fact. Um, so, yeah, so it is documented.
Okay, I think we're at odds, um, let me just rephrase my question. I'm trying to understand when, when you've got the uh senior clinician, your senior manager coming to these meetings. Have they done a full and formal consideration and assessment of the recent records of Win Marty? And then provide feedback to the staff about how they can do things better or differently?
Not to my knowledge.
Much, or is it, or is it informal?
The meetings, they're formal, I, I consider them formal supervision, um, and they are documented and sent out, but. Um, no, there's no, nothing provided by the, the senior manager or the senior clinician or, um. Yeah, the notes are completed by myself or, or one of the coordinators, not a clinical team member.
Okay, and so you are unaware the extent to which the senior clinician or the senior manager? May have or have not closely interrogated the recent records of Win Marty before coming to such a meeting, is that correct?
Sorry, could you repeat that question?
So, so you are unaware? As to the extent to which the senior clinician or the senior manager may or may not have interrogated, looked at, examined? The full records of, full recent records of Win Marty before they come to that meeting?
I don't know the extent of that, no.
I want to take you, please, to um page six of your statement. And I want to get up, please. Um. Document, can I just have a second to make sure that, um, it's properly redacted? My volume E six, yeah, this is what. Now, um, to the operator, please don't bring up this first page. The document itself is N double T dot triple zero three. Dot zero zero one zero dot zero one three five. But the page I want to show on the screen is zero one three six. Mr. Lane, can I orient you to what this is whilst the technology is occurring? This is the document which you refer to as Anexa T L three. Um, the person-centered support package, you familiar with this document?
Yes.
Okay, so is this the presentation which is given? To new staff members in respect of Win Marty and the person-centered support package?
That's one of a number of um different training sessions that are provided to new staff members. Um, that package would be updated when there's a new behaviour support plan.
Missed the last, sorry, I missed the last half of your sentence, you said this would be updated?
When there's an amendment to the behaviour support plan.
Okay, but can I let you know that the version I'm showing is the one which you annexed to your statement to the Royal Commission? And so your understanding, I take it, would be that that was the one which was current at the time of your statement?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay, and this is a PowerPoint presentation, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and it's delivered as a once-off to the new staff member, is that correct?
That particular version of that would be delivered to new staff, um, when there's changes to the. Behaviour support plan or amendments, I should say, um, a new package would be developed, um, and that would be, um. That would be facilitated by one of the clinical team for all staff members.
All right, so if I understand this correctly, that the new staff members get it and then everybody gets it when it's updated?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay, and so what do we look to in terms of audit? That is, to satisfy ourselves and yourselves? That the staff are actually getting this training in those two ways in. Um, at the times you've indicated, do you have a record of that?
There's a training log, yes.
Okay, so we can have a look at that. What I want to take you to is, um. On this page zero one three six. This is a.
We're looking at that, um, training package?
Yes, so the, the page which is up on the screen, can you see the screen in front of you? It says content of this package, yes, okay. So what I read from number eight is that new staff. Are told. That the positive approaches to be taken to behaviour that challenges are. Win Marty Support Plan. And restrictive practices.
I'm just trying to find that section, please.
Okay, so it's the second page of the PowerPoint pack and it's up on the screen. Can you see it's highlighted?
I can see that.
Yes, so is that what new staff are told? That the positive appro- approaches to behaviour that challenges are my behaviour support plan and restrictive practices?
I'd have to look at that section, I'm sure there's uh more information um in that section.
All right, well, can we agree at least that this is the slide which is sho- the very first slide which is shown? As so far as you understand to these new staff, do we agree with that?
That is a part of that package.
Excuse me. All right, um, have you got the actual hard copy document in front of you?
I do.
Okay, I don't want the next slide to come up on screen because there's a photograph on it, but if you can turn to slide eight, please, which is. For us, we've got numbering at the top right-hand corner, N double T zero 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 three. for us, we've got numbering at the top right hand corner, N double T zero 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 three, zero zero one zero, zero zero one seven eight. Okay. Have you got that in front of you?
Yes, I've got, um, so number eight here, about positive behaviour support.
Okay. And you'll see again that one of the things listed there is the positive approaches to behaviour that challenges is restrictive practices?
Yeah, so that's on the, the title of this slide, yes?
Do you see a problem in that being the message which is being given to the new staff who are to look after Win Marti?
I think that's, that's a heading. Um, the content of, of that, um, section of the, the training package is explained by the clinician that delivers that training. So it would be explained in detail, um, what's being referred to there.
Yes, but this is the, this is what they get, isn't it? This is what they get as a takeaway.
And so these, this is the slide, um, the PowerPoint slides, yes?
Yeah, okay. Do they get that as a takeaway? They get to have that PowerPoint, take it away, keep it, have it electronically?
Normally it's not printed off, um, it's just a slide and, um, there's discussion during that training package.
All right. Do they get electronically?
Um, not that I'm aware of.
All right. Yeah. Is there a copy of this, um, PowerPoint kept within the unit so people could have reference to this person centred support package when they're delivering services to Win Marti?
So the behaviour support plan, um, is available for staff members to read. Um, that's, um, accessible to all staff members. This particular PowerPoint slide, um, I don't believe that's available for everyone, um, to access whenever they want. But the behaviour support plan, which is what this package was developed from, is available for everyone.
Okay. So just let me see if I understand this. This PowerPoint package is, to your understanding, delivered verbally, delivered orally to the new staff members, right?
Yes.
Okay. They may or may not get electronically or hard copy this document. Is that right?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure if they, um, receive a hard copy or not.
Okay. And you're not sure whether they actually even get electronically, is that right?
No, but as I said, they have access to the, the full behaviour support plan and are encouraged to read that document.
Okay. So what we have been communicated to these new staff members on two slides at least is that the positive approach to behaviour that challenges, one of the things listed is restrictive practices. We're agreed on that. Yes?
It says that on the page. I think what would be included in, in that, and I can't recall specifically, is, um, strategies that staff members are to use before the use of restrictive practice. Um, and that there's a number of different options available to our staff members which they, um, use on a regular basis.
So, so do I, do I take it that you see no concerns with the way in which, um, this positive behaviour support plan on the second slide and at the beginning part of part eight just refers to it in that way, restrictive practices?
I can see how that could be interpreted that, um, that, that's, um, end in end with positive behaviour support, but, um, that's not the case.
Okay, well, how could it be interpreted problematically? You've just said it might be.
I can see that it says my behaviour support plan and restrictive practices. Um, and, and what you're getting at, um, that, that's a concern.
Ye- yes, because it rather indicates, doesn't it, that restrictive practices is a part of a positive approach to behaviour management. Agreed?
I can see, um, what you're saying, yes.
But you're not too worried about it, is that what you say? You're not too worried about it because whoever's giving the presentation of this training, you say, would cover off on the, how you administer restrictive practices.
Yes, definitely. That's included in detail in that training.
Right. But even seeing it now so starkly like that, is that something you'd want to see changed in your own documentation?
Yeah, that, and that makes sense to change it, um, but in the context of what's delivered, um, that doesn't marry up with what's delivered during those trainings.
Which you are at sometimes and not at other times, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, so you're relying upon, um, whoever the person is delivering those trainings to make sure that there's clarification in the message you're intending to convey. You're just hoping that's happening.
I'm sure that that's happening.
Well, how are you sure?
Because I've been involved in those training sessions, um, and heard the content of the training sessions.
Yeah. But you've heard them time and again. It's a different situation, isn't it, to a person who's hearing it for the first time? You'd agree with me?
Sorry, can you clarify that?
You would agree that the situation of somebody of yourself being there and hearing it time and again is different from the circumstance of a first time new staff member hearing it?
It is different, um, but what's included in that plan is a lot of detail around positive behaviour support, the strategies that staff need to use, um, and that's quite clear in that training session.
All right. Well, I'm going to move on. Um. At sub paragraph D, you refer to the management of actual or potential aggression course. And you say there's an informal refresher training may also be provided on occasions if it is requested by staff, if management identify that it may assist particular staff. Or if it has been observed that Win Marti's behaviours of concerns have increased and the risk to himself or others have subsequently increased. First, when was the last informal refresher training provided to staffs?
I don't have, um, a date on that. I can tell you that, um, the management of actual potential aggression is, um, for all new staff members and then there's an annual refresher that's completed for all staff members. Um, the informal refreshers are completed as needed or if indicated by a staff member that they'd like a refresher. Um, I can't, um, tell you the specifics on, on when that was last done, but it's normally with smaller groups, and it has happened on a number of occasions.
Who provides this informal refresher training?
So I'm one of the two, um, MAPA instructors. And so it would generally be myself, possibly, um, actually, I think all the, the informal refreshes have been done by myself, um, and a former MAPA instructor that's no longer with the department.
So what is, what's informal, what's an informal refresher? What is it?
Okay, so there's a, a formal foundation course that goes for two days. There's a, a formal refresher where assessment, um, is assessed and documented. The informal refreshes, um, there, there's a, a record kept, but there's no formal assessing as such. It doesn't follow, um, the guides from that program. It's just, um.
What is it?
So, okay, so the informal refreshers might be talking about different aspects of that training. Would you like me to explain what's included in that training package?
Yes, I would.
Yeah, sure.
Well, hang on a second, hang on a second. Provided it goes beyond the information provided in your paragraph D, because you listed a whole thing as A to J, what I'm trying to understand is what is informal refresher training? Is it a chat? Is it a, do you get this bit? Let's have a discussion about that. What is it?
Um, yeah, so it's, I sit down and have a chat. Um, we could go through some of the disengagement skills and holding skills, um. That, that's generally what it is. It's around disengagements and holding, um, but we can cover some of the other content, um, in that program as well.
And what precisely is documented in respect of the informal refresher training given? What do you document?
Yeah, just what was, uh, what topics were covered in that informal training. Um, so the date of the training, who was there, what, what was covered, so whether it was hold sort of disengagements or might be, um, talking about fear and anxiety or, um, any other aspect of that.
Okay. You say in your statement it may be provided if it's requested by, by staff. Does that mean sometimes it's not?
Sometime, in, so when you say sometimes it's not, as in some days it's not, or?
Okay, your statement says in fresh, informal refresher training may also be provided on occasions if it is requested by staff. What I'm asking you is,
Okay.
Does that mean, does that mean, does that mean that sometimes a staff member will request some extra training and not be given it? Is that what that means?
No, that's, it's probably not written very well, but on every occasion that staff member raises that they want to, um, do MAPA training, that would be facilitated.
Right. It says may also be provided if management identify that it may assist particular staff. Does that mean sometimes management will have identified it may assist particular staff and the informal refresher training is not given?
No, that would always be provided as well.
Right. And then it says it may be provided if it's been observed that Win Marti's behaviours have of concern have increased and the risk to himself or others have subsequently increased. Does that mean sometimes it's not provided in those circumstances?
That is what that means, yeah. Sometimes it wouldn't be, um, it would depend on discussions with the, the clinical and management team and, um, a bit of a pain around what, what, um, what's recommended in, in that respect.
Right.
Keeping in mind that there are annual formal refreshes for all staff members.
Yes, yes, I understand that. So let me come back to that. Um. So in respect of this part of your statement, what is it that management does in order to proactively identify that additional training may assist staff?
So we, um, there's team meetings, um, discussion that's had at team meetings might be, um, a forum that, that's discussed. Um, we're always, uh, encouraging people to, um, raise any concerns that I have around staff training. We also debrief, um, critical incidents, so any serious incidents, we hold a, a staff debrief. Would you like me to explain what's involved in that debrief?
Yes, please.
Sure. So during the debrief, um, we look at, um, setting events, um, triggers, um, any of the behaviour and how staff responded to the behaviour, um, including the, the proactive and reactive strategies that they use. Um, we look at the function of the behaviour, um, any consequences, um, to do with that incident. We offer staff support, um, and staff training and would identify any potential training needs during those debriefs as well. Um, and there's a number of outcomes normally from the incident debriefs, um, and follow-up that's required.
But who's the we? Who's the we in this, this critical incident debrief?
Yeah, so it depends who's facilitating the debriefs, but it's normally the behavioural clinician, the, the senior clinician.
Can you tell me whether there's a formal procedure which requires an examination of, um, patterns of administration of PRN?
So that would be, um, one of the clinical staff members' duties. I'm, I'm not aware of the details of, of what's done in that regard. Um, I.
Sorry, so you, you're not aware as to whether or not there is a documented procedure which requires um, an analysis of patterns in respect of the administration of PRN? You don't know either way?
I understand that that happens. I'm not, uh, aware of the, the particulars. Uh, all restrictive practices are documented, um, and that information, um, is provided to, to the clinicians and senior management team.
Have you yourself ever been part of a formal review of the patterns of administration of PRN medication? Which has looked to see whether or not patterns are emerging about who's giving the PRN, times of day that the PRN is being administered or any other aspects which might emerge to provide some sort of analysis as to choices to administer PRN, you being part of some, a really formal process in that respect?
Not, um, aware of any really formal process. I haven't been a part of it, but the use of restrictive interventions is discussed, um, at case conferences, um, and during incident debriefs. Um, the duties of behavioural clinician or the senior clinician, we'd better to ask, um, than about those.
Right. So you would never have seen a formalised system or pattern analysis of the administration of PRN for Win Marti, is that correct?
Definitely. All that information is definitely, um, assessed in the formulation of the behaviour support plan.
I know. And what I'm asking you is whether you yourself as the direct services manager, has ever seen a formal written analysis about patterns of administration of PRN medication to Win Marti?
I can't recall seeing anything, um, specifically on, on that.
Can I take you please to paragraph seventeen? Here you say that cultural competency and cultural safety is provided to staff who provide direct care and support to Win Marti in informal and formal ways. What's the informal cultural competency and cultural safety training?
So we're receptive to, um, input from family members about Win Marti's care. And we, we act on that information when we receive it where we can. Um, there's informal conversations with, formerly we've had a, a cultural mentor employed with the the work unit, um, in two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, I believe it was. Um, currently we have an Aboriginal liaison officer. So there's a lot of, um, informal conversations and teaching staff member languages and, um, um, cultural competency in general. So we also have, um.
Let me just take you back and direct you specifically to, to the answer, to the question rather. Because what you're asked to answer in the, in the notice to producers, whether any staff providing direct care and support to Win Marti between those dates have been trained in cultural competency and cultural safety, okay? And what you said there is that cultural competency and cultural safety is provided to staff who provide drive direct care and support in informal and formal ways. So what I'm trying to understand is not just, sorry, is not, you know, the family might give you some ideas or the liaison officer might give you some ideas. I actually want to understand what training is provided.
Sure. So, um, cultural competency is embedded in, um, the behaviour support plans and training is delivered on those behaviour support plans. So, um, there's a number of, of different, um, things that are discussed during those, um, training packages and that are included in the behaviour support plans.
All right. And so beyond that, that's all, is that right?
Uh, so we have monthly meetings, um, often, um, discussing cultural aspects, um, specific to the clients. Um, during those, um, monthly meetings, um, or twice monthly meetings, there are, um, we have the Aboriginal liaison officer deliver a section in that meeting. Um, he talks about language and sign language and different cultural considerations. language and sign language and different cultural considerations, so.
I'll come back to the monthly meetings, but what I wanna understand is, is, do I have this correct? At paragraph twenty, you set out that all FDU are required to complete formal training through the Aboriginal Cultural Awareness Programme, either online or in person. And then you set out the four learning outcomes. Is that the extent of the formal cultural training?
Um, so that, that information's drawn from uh the e-learning website, I understand, but um there's more included in that, uh my understanding than, than what appears there.
Well.
It's got, I guess under, under P there's pretty broad, understanding cultural awareness, working across cultures and and cultural competency.
All right. So, Miss Langcake, you, you'll understand that you were asked a specific question and it's noticed to produce, and what we see here is insofar as formal training are these four um assessment points under paragraph D. Do you have direct knowledge that there is other formal training which is mandatorily provided to staff within the FDU?
O- outside of the um foundation, cultural awareness foundation, um and the team meetings?
Yes.
There's um the um cultural um elements to the different training packages that are provided as well. Other than that, um there's nothing that comes to mind.
Right. And insofar as the cultural a- aspects of the packages you've just referred to, all of that has already been provided to the Royal Commission in your statement and the lectures, and that's, that's the extent of it, is that correct?
Um, so there's a number of um ways that we um include training on cultural competency, um not necessarily just in those documents, but in the, the day-to-day activities that we do and the, the discussions that I have with staff um and, and providing feedback to those staff members. So as far as um information that I can provide you that's written, um the training done on the behaviour support plans, um the team meetings, the notes from those, um that online training, the cultural awareness training, um they're the only ones that come to mind.
Okay. Can I take you through um these learning outcomes? Understand what acknowledgement of country and welcome to country are and the difference between the two. You'd ex, agree with me that that is um fairly baseline competency in respect of cultural awareness?
Yeah, it appears so, yes.
Right. Um, a- and insofar as your other uh learning outcomes, how are they assessed?
Um, so completion of that course, um there's a, there's a um test at the end of that course that assesses competency. Um, and then through direct um conversations during those team meetings, um where that um uh that's documented as well. So there's discussions and sharing of experiences. Um, and that's, uh that involves the Aboriginal liaison officer, um who's present for those meetings.
Right. So these team meetings you speak of are the monthly meetings, correct?
Yes.
Right. Um, sometimes they don't go ahead, is that correct?
There have been um times when we've been short-staffed and, and meetings haven't gone ahead because there wasn't staff available to attend any meetings or working with other clients or at work night shifts.
Yes, and you agree with, you would agree with me that um there's no formal assessment of competency, either a cultural or otherwise at these team meetings, it's more just a discussion, is that correct?
There's no, no tool to assess competency outside of the um the course, um the Aboriginal Cultural Awareness Programme, um that I'm aware of.
Okay, and you say it's either online or in person. So the online course, I take it is sort of a PowerPoint slide where you have to answer some questions at the end?
I'd say it's an actual programme, so it's not a PowerPoint. Um, it's a course that's attached to the anti-government um Department of Health website. Um, and it's, it's a training programme with an assessment at the end that um staff are required to, to pass.
A- and how long does it take to do?
Um. I can't recall how long, um, yeah.
All right. Um, finally, before lunch, I'll take you please to to this notion that you've already spoken of about the, the FDU being um receptive to um suggestions made by the family. Now, by the family, do you include in that both guardians?
Um, one of the guardians is a family member of Winmarti's. Um, there's also uh Laurel Stokel, who's a family member. Um, and then our main two contacts as far as family are.
Right. And so insofar as you speak about being responsive to suggestions, do you say that applies both with respect to Auntie Margaret and with respect to Mr McGee?
Um, yeah, so i- in what um aspect are you? So there's a current um direction that's gone from the C E for Mr McGee to contact our staff member, our staff members directly um through a generic email account, not um, not to those individual staff members.
Yes.
Um, so consultation um on various issues does happen with Miss McGee, but it's um in a different forum than what it is with um Margaret and Laurel.
Yes, I understand that the method of communication currently from Mr McGee is via generic email. But when you speak of being responsive to suggestions, are you including there Mr McGee and Auntie Margaret?
Yes.
But there are occasions upon which suggestions are made by Auntie Margaret and or Mr McGee which have not been taken up by the FDU. Are we in agreement, agreement about that?
I'm sure that there have been, yes.
Chair, would that be a convenient time?
It would, subject to a couple of questions um I'd like to ask Mr Langcake. What's humbugging, Mr Langcake?
So um humbugging's um referred to in the, the behaviour support plan when Winmarti um is asking for um generally a tangible item and he becomes fixated on that item. Um, and is regularly asking for the, for the same item. Um, often he's not able to obtain um those tangible items for um a variety of reasons. They might not exist or they mightn't be easily accessible. Um, so that's what the humbug refers to in the behaviour support plan.
Why is it called humbuggy?
That's a, that's an Aboriginal term for for that behaviour. That's fine to say.
What sort of behaviour?
The um, the constant asking for, for an item.
I see. Does the term imply that it's within uh Winmarti's control as to whether he behaves like that?
Uh, I'm not, not sure on that.
Not sure? What's the fishbowl?
So the fishbowl is the um staff office that's in the secure care facility.
Yeah, yes. What's its relationship to where Winmarti is located?
Okay, so Winmarti has um a room to, uh that, that comes off the fishbowl and, and a lounge area. Um, and then around the fishbowl, there's treadmills and a, a pool table and air hockey table. Um, so that's all around the outside of the fishbowl.
Winmarti is observed at all times, is he, from, from the fishbowl?
So that's the direction that, that staff have um been given and that regular, sorry, constant direct line of sight is maintained where it's um appropriate and possible.
The uh behaviour support plan, or at least the interim one, that is supposed to have expired on the twenty ninth of January, talks about Winmarti hitting the glass wall of the fishbowl. What, what's that a reference to?
Yeah, so the fishbowl has um windows all around it. Um, so that staff are able to observe Winmarti if they weren't um sitting down with him and providing some support. So those windows um into the fishbowl, that's what that refers to.
So when Marty gets frustrated, he can ba, he does bang on the windows, so.
He's, yeah, he often bangs on the windows um for, for different reasons. Sometimes to get people's attention. Um, sometimes because he's upset.
The behaviour support plan that seems to be in the documenta, documentation is labelled interim and it says the end date is the twenty ninth of January two thousand and twenty-one. Is there any uh replacement for the interim uh behaviour support plan?
I believe that was um submitted in a table, uh that was submitted late last week um with a number of addictions.
Though there is a current behaviour support plan that replaces the interim one, is there?
Yes, and that's a, a dynamic document, um that's updated.
Yes, all right, thank you. Um, Dr Malefante, shall we adjourn until uh one o'clock Brisbane time, two o'clock Sydney time?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, yes, we'll adjourn.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned. The Royal Commission is now in session.
Thank you, uh Mr Langcake, for returning. Uh, Dr Malefante will continue asking you some questions.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, Mr Langcake, can I ask you whether there's a formal requirement for staff to bring to your attention any suggestions made by Winmarti's family or guardians about how FDU staff might provide care or interact with Winmarti?
Nothing formal, but I think our communication as a team is pretty good in that regard.
So, so just in general expectation that they'll have a chat with you if something's raised by the family or the guardians?
Yes, we do have um daily notes that are completed by the staff members working with those uh with each client. Um, and yeah, I would expect that that would be documented in those daily notes and an email sent. Um, nothing formal though.
Okay. Email sent to who?
To myself.
Okay, a- and how do you follow up on that? Make sure that everything's followed up on? Do you have an audit tracker for yourself?
I- in, in regards to, to what specifically, any suggestions from family?
Yes.
Uh, there's no, there is no tool in place for tracking that, um but I think um being responsive to those um concerns if they're raised.
Okay, so just self-reliant upon, first of all, receiving communication and then doing something about it, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Now, is it correct that there's no formal requirement for any of the staff within the FDU to learn Winmarti's uh first languages?
Um, a part of the, the current behaviour support plan has um language incorporated in that plan. Um, and that's an expectation and there is um a, a plan around um staff members learning certain phrases or certain words in um Arunda.
Okay, so when do we expect um that to be in place and assessed? To see if it's working?
So that's uh included in the behaviour support plan as well. Um, my understanding it's within six months um of the start date of that behaviour support plan.
And is that the first time there's been a mandatory requirement on staff to learn language?
To my knowledge, um I'm not aware of uh any mandatory requirements to learn language.
Okay, so it's still not mandatory, is that right?
Um, in the behaviour support plan, the current one, it is an expectation that staff members learn certain words in Arunda.
Okay, so you agree with me, you agree with me there's no mandatory requirement on staff to learn um Mr Winmarti's language, just an expectation, is that correct?
Um, well, it's part of that behaviour support plan that it's, it's a requirement, so I could say that is mandatory.
Okay. And how are you gonna make sure it's done? What's the, what's the audit tool on checking to make sure that's been done?
So I haven't developed the behaviour support plan. I have read it. I can't recall the specifics of um, of the tools, um if there's a tool around assessing competency. I'd have to refer to that plan if that's okay.
Well, I won't get you to look it up now. Um, I'll allow you to take that question on notice. We've got a bit more to get through, okay?
Okay.
Now, um at paragraph twenty-one, you say that guardians are consulted regarding Winmarti's behavioural support plan in line with the requirements set out in the Act?
Yes.
Yes, okay. What do you understand con- consultation to require?
Um, that the guardians are given an opportunity to provide input um around those, uh around the behaviour support plan.
So it's not just a one-way process, is it? It's a two-way process of exchanging ideas in a collaborative and informative way. That's what you take consultation to mean?
Yes, so yeah, we, we'd seek input from the guardians about their thoughts on a variety of different topics.
So it's about exploring plans and options and taking their concerns into account before the plans are finalised, is that what you take it to mean?
That's my understanding.
Okay. At the time you wrote your statement, you acknowledged that input from Winmarti's guardians is imperative for the ongoing provision of culturally safe, positive behaviour support?
Um, whi- which section are we referring to, just so I can um check that?
Paragraph twenty-one. Middle of the first paragraph.
Okay, I'm following.
Yes, you see that there?
Yes.
You, you meant it then and you uh stand by that statement now?
Definitely that um the guardians are given an opportunity to have input, yes.
Okay, but, but more than that, Mr Langcake, what you're saying there, and I wanna understand if this is what your current belief is, is that it's imperative that they have input for the ongoing provision of culturally safe, positive behaviour and behaviour support? Is that your current belief?
It's definitely something that's, that's valuable and, and important for the development of those uh of the behaviour support plan.
All right, so your answer is yes.
Sure, yeah.
Thank you. And you'd also accept that the importance of engagement with family and community and guardians is critical in continuing Winmarti's um progress?
Yes.
And in that respect, you'd accept that having a very open, respective and supportive line of communication with the family and guardians is absolutely critical?
I think moving forward, that would be what's best for the client, the best outcomes would be able to be achieved.
Yes, w- not just moving forward, but that's the case all the time, isn't it?
Uh, can you repeat the specifics of that question, sorry?
Yes. Would you accept that the importance of engagement with the family and community and guardians is critical in continuing Winmarti's progress is the first part of the question? Think you agree with me about that?
Yes.
Okay. And then I said, I asked, in that respect, you would accept that having a very open, respective, respectful and supportive line of communication with the family and guardians is absolutely critical?
Yes, it's, that's an important area, yes.
Okay. Do you agree that the restriction on communication with Mr McGee, that is the direction to him to only engage by way of emails or generic email address, is hindering um the way in which the behavioural support plan can be produced?
Uh, I don't agree that it's hindering um the behaviour support plan.
Why not?
My, my understanding is that um both guardians have been provided an opportunity to have input into that plan.
When you say my understanding, you're not involved at that level, is that wrong?
Uh, so that's, that's not a part of my duties. That would be with the person that's developing the behaviour support plan and the clinical team.
So, so re, so really my question perhaps is misplaced? So really, my question perhaps is misplaced, that given you aren't involved at that level, you can't directly speak to how the very limited nature of the communication from Mr McGee is impacting the preparation and development of such plans?
That's not something I can comment on.
Right. Well, can I ask you this? Would you agree that that restriction on the way in which Mr McGee is able to communicate with the forensic disability unit does not assist you in having full input from a guardian and a person who has known Winmarti for a very long time? Do you agree it doesn't help you?
So the direction from the chief executive for Mr McGee to communicate with us through the generic email account, is it helpful, is that your question?
I'm suggesting to you it's unhelpful for you to do your work to carry out the aims and intentions of the FDU.
I think it's important that we move forward and can communicate with the guardians. Something that I'd like to see rectified in the future.
Thank you. Whose decision is it, so far as you understand?
On Mr McGee's. That rests with the CEO. So my understanding is that mediation has been offered around some concerns and that direction that was given to Mr McGee to communicate through the generic.
All right, I'll just let you stop there because as you say, it's your understanding and we've got already evidence about the mediation etcetera. I want to ask you about your direct knowledge and understanding. You've told us that you think it would be good if you can re-establish the lines of communication with Mr McGee. Now, are you being consulted by those within health about making such a move? Are they asking you what you want?
Okay, I liaise through my, my direct line manager. So I'm not having those conversations with the CEO, but I expect people at higher levels in the senior management team would be having those conversations.
I didn't mean to cut you off, sorry. But you yourself have at least communicated one rung up the chain that you would like to see the lines of communication reopened.
I've expressed that before, yes.
All right, thank you. I'll take you to paragraph 33 of your statement, please. Here you observe that when you started that job, that record-keeping with respect to incidents was not consistent. And you said you observed that when you commenced your role of coordinator on 21 February 2019. Okay, you're oriented to your statement there?
Yes.
Thirty-three?
Yes.
Okay. So as I understand it, tell me if I'm understanding your statement correctly, is that although, so far as you could tell, incidents had been recorded contemporaneously in daily progress notes, a risk man report had not been created for all incidents? Is that right? Okay. Now, I take it that the purpose of Riskman, which presumably is a electronic programme, is that right?
That's correct.
And the purpose of it is to send electronic reports about incidents to certain people within the FDU or the Department of Health, is that right?
Yes, so all critical incidents, whether there's restrictive interventions used or not, would be, should be documented on Riskman. And then notifications go to a number of clinical and management staff.
Okay, so that they can then take such action as is necessary with respect to those incidents, is that right?
Yes, and there's the debriefing process as well in regards to actions.
All right, now, you say in your statement that you subsequently arranged for staff to complete risk and reports so as to back capture the entry, I suppose. Is that right?
Yeah, so there were a number of incidents. From memory, they were low-level incidents that didn't require restrictive interventions that were captured in the daily notes, but they weren't uploaded to Riskman. And incident report wasn't completed, so that might be orange behaviour, what we refer to as orange behaviour, which could be threatening self-harm or threatening an assault, but not necessarily carrying through with those threats.
So did you identify what the systemic failure was which underpinned the incidents not being recorded in Riskman?
I think there was a change in reporting requirements. I'm not sure if that, if that was monitored and who that was monitored by before I was in that position. So I can't really comment on what happened before I was in that role.
Right. And so are you, do you have direct knowledge as to whether that Riskman programme is now being audited to ensure that the incidents are being captured in Riskman as required, or is that outside your direct knowledge?
So daily notes are checked often to cross-reference with incident reports that are uploaded to Riskman. It's a requirement of staff members to upload incident reports the day of the incident. And my understanding is that that is happening on, yeah, my understanding is that happens on all occasions where there's an incident.
Mr Langcake, I'm trying to understand if there's a formal audit to make sure it's working as it should. Is that within your direct knowledge or not?
A formal audit? As I said, the daily notes are checked.
Sometimes, you said sometimes.
The daily notes are checked regularly. There is a process, it's been delegated to the coordinator and supervisors to check all daily notes, and that is documented in a specific spreadsheet and cross-reference with incidents, so yes.
All right, so you'd be able to assist the commission with records which demonstrate that Riskman is a currently audited process, is that right?
I can provide that spreadsheet, which shows that the daily notes have been checked. And that would highlight if any incidents were not voted to risk them.
All right, can I take you then, please, to paragraph 41? You observe that an issue being considered by Winmarti's medical practitioners at present, and at present was 20th of January 21, the date of your statement, is that Winmarti experiences some lethargy following his morning medication and sleeps for about two hours and mid-morning each day. And you speak about a neurologist review currently pending. So the last review of the identified medication, so far as we can ascertain, was 11 September. And that appears also in paragraph 42 of your statement. When's this review going to happen?
So my understanding, and keep in mind, I haven't been in Alice Springs over the last week, but there has been a review, I understand, by Dr Fernando that took place yesterday. I think that, from my understanding, is that the other review from a neurologist is, has been arranged or is waiting on being confirmed. Sorry, does that answer your question?
Well, sort of. I just probably just need to clarify something. Dr Fernando is a consultant psychiatrist. When do you understand, so, you say, sorry, sorry, I'll just start again. So the neurologist review is pending, but you don't know when, you can't help us with when that's going to happen?
No, I can provide that information if you like. That would sit with the case manager to arrange.
Okay, and do you know when the last neurologist review was?
I'm not aware of that, sorry.
Okay, is that something you can find out for us, please?
Yes, certainly.
Thank you. Now, paragraph, you say at paragraph 44, that guardians are invited by email and phone to attend specialist appointments. But insofar as that paragraph is concerned, that's not the subject of your direct knowledge, that's correct?
That duty doesn't sit with my position, that's a case manager duty.
Okay, so that's something that somebody's, sorry, that's something that somebody's told you?
That's my understanding.
Yes, okay. Paragraph 45, you say that guardians were up until July 2020 invited by email to attend monthly case conferences to discuss key issues. And they provided information to include in the meeting agenda and they actively contributed during such conferences. I take it you found such contributions to be important and helpful to you in the discharge of your work?
It's not something that I can really comment on around medication. There were conversations around the guardians' thoughts around medications. But I'm not a doctor, I don't know how much I can say about whether they were helpful or not. It's not a part of my duties.
Right. Now, paragraph, again, within paragraph 45, you speak about the direction to Mr McGee and you state that the direction affects FDU staff only and has not impacted general practitioner and prescribing doctors. Again, that's not knowledge you actually have, is it?
That's my understanding.
So you agree with me?
I believe that I understand that issue and that that's correct.
Right. You don't have any direct knowledge of it, we're agreed?
I'm not sure who's contacted Mr McGee and who has been advised they can't. My understanding is that that direction relates just to the forensic disability unit and our staff members.
Okay, I'm just going to leave it. Now, I want to take you to Winmarti's trips to country. We've already got before the commission the chronology of visits last year, so I won't go into the detail of it, but to note this. As you know, he went to country in June 2020. There was an incident with respect to the ute, you're familiar with that generally?
I wasn't present for that incident, but I did receive phone calls and I participated in both the staff debrief and the family debrief following that incident.
Right, okay. And then the next trip was not until December, that's correct?
That's correct. Would you like me to provide some context around that?
Well, let's let me ask you a couple of questions first and then we'll see if we need some more, okay? It was about five months after that visit in June that the risk assessment was completed. That is, the risk assessment wasn't completed until the 30th of November 2020, is that your understanding?
Yes, that sounds right.
Okay, did you have any role in the preparation of that risk assessment?
So I think you're referring to the environmental risk assessment. That was one of a number of things that needed to be completed for those trips to recommence.
And then shortly thereafter, that is shortly after the 30th of November, the trip to country was organised for December. That's the correct chronology, isn't it?
Yes, the 5th of December.
Right. Why did it take five months or so before a trip, another trip to country could be organised for Winmarti?
There were a number of actions that came out of that incident and a number of other concerning incidents where Winmarti, there was some serious self-harm. It wasn't just that incident, there were a number of other incidents. However, relating to that trip, there was information submitted with the table that was submitted late last week that details those action items that were required to be completed. Do you want me to talk about some of those?
Well, I want to understand if it's your evidence that, notwithstanding the fact that Winmarti is the only inpatient, as it were, within the forensic disability unit, that it takes five months to organise a trip to country?
I'm happy to read out some of the actions that were required.
We can read the, we can read the actions, we've got them in the evidence, thank you. Is that truly, is that truly the fastest time to, is that, sorry, I'm trying to rephrase the question. Is it the quickest you could get a trip to country organised for Winmarti?
There was a number of different stakeholders that were required to complete actions, including external parties on forensic. So there was a forensic psychiatrist that was providing a report, there was a psychologist that needed to provide a report. There was a vehicle that was severely damaged in that incident. There were staffing considerations that needed to be taken into account. We had to organise some additional satellite phones to increase our capability with communication and a number of other tasks that were required. So when all of those tasks were completed, I think there was a meeting shortly after that and that a trip was organised soon thereafter.
Right. And you say all of this was necessary even though a specific trigger for the ute incident was identified within three days of the incident, namely that the car was being moved to pack up and leave. Is that right?
Would you like me to explain a little bit about the sequence of events in that incident?
Yes, go ahead.
Mr Langlake, can I just encourage you, if you don't mind, just listen to Dr Melaphon's questions? Do the best you can to ask her, answer her questions. Don't worry about asking Dr Melaphon what she wants, just listen to the question, answer the question if you'd be good enough to do that, thank you.
Sure.
So let me just come back to that question, okay? Do you accept that within three days or so, the trigger for Winmarti's behaviour was identified and it was identified as being the car was being moved to pack up and leave? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and you understand, do you, that the car being moved to pack up and leave was not how things were ordinarily done on these visits? Was not how Winmarti would ordinarily experience what was done on these visits? Do you understand that?
That's my understanding.
Okay, and did you understand therefore that the fact that things were being done in a different order was such as to trigger Winmarti, correct?
I think that's a contributing factor to that behaviour. There was a clear trigger, but there were a number of other contributing factors.
Right, well, I'm reading from, and I don't think we can put it up on screen because I don't think it's redacted, but I'm reading from a note which is recorded as family debrief, N double T dot triple zero three dot triple zero five dot two three eight five. And the one thing that was listed as a trigger, trigger slash S, one thing is listed there is car being moved to pack up and leave.
So that's the trigger, but there are other setting events and things that. Yeah, so that's the trigger, but there are other setting events and things that may not have been obvious trigger that contributed to that escalation and that behaviour.
Right, and those setting events are, sorry, that Winmarti has a long history of violence behaviours, it reads. Environmental factors, Winmarti hasn't been out to country for an extended period of time. Client and environment, there are a number of family members present who have not been exposed to Winmarti's behaviour of concerns. There are also weapons of shovels that were easily accessible to Winmarti, they're the setting factors?
That's some of the setting events. There was also a number of, so there was also a number of medication reductions leading up to that and there was growing concerns about Winmarti's escalations following some of those medication reductions.
Right, I'm just going to suggest this to you, Mr Langcake, that the prioritisation of getting Winmarti back to community was not put into effect by the FDU. Can you agree or disagree with that, please?
I disagree, that was a high priority.
Can I take you now, please, to paragraph sixty-two, where you speak about sex education and you speak about a modified SO Safe program currently being in development? Now, you'd agree with me that the guardians and/or family recommend, recommended quite a period of time ago that Winmarti be given some sex education, agree with that?
Yes, that's my understanding. I'm not sure when that was raised, but I'm aware that that was raised.
Okay, when will this SO Safe training actually be delivered to Winmarti?
At the first stage of that program, it's my understanding, it's been developed and it's ready to go. Because of some of the concerns raised about cultural appropriateness recently, that's been put on hold temporarily until we can liaise with family further, specifically around that SO Safe program.
So we've got no idea of timing as to when he'll actually get some sexual education, is that the position?
I can't say a date, but I would expect it will be within the coming weeks.
Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm aware that there's been input from our Aboriginal liaison officer around that program, but we do want to seek families' input into that as well.
Okay. You spoke before about there being some holds, H O L D S, used with Winmarti? Now, are you talking there about the application of force by a staff member on Winmarti, that is physically holding him?
Are you referring to an incident in particular or?
I'm referring to the evidence you gave earlier where you spoke of there being some holds and that being something which might have sort of triggered you to give some informal training?
I believe what I was talking about is MAPPA training and that part of that MAPPA training includes disengagements and holds.
Yes, so have some holds been used on Winmarti?
Yes, I believe that's happened from memory on two occasions. And that was in response to serious escalations.
And are they recorded?
Yes. So they're recorded on the restricted intervention reports as an emergency use of restricted practice.
And to the extent they're not already provided to the Royal Commission, can they be?
I believe they both are, but of course.
Excuse me for just a minute. Can I just take you, please, to, hopefully I can take you, please, to N double T dot triple zero three dot zero zero one zero dot zero two six two at zero two six seven? Now firstly, can I ask you, is this a table that you put together or you asked to be put together, setting out all restrictive interventions from the first of May twenty eighteen to the thirtieth of December twenty twenty?
Yes, so that was put together as part of my evidence.
Okay, and the two incidents of physical restraint that we see on the ninth of July at twelve, twenty, sorry, twelve fifty and the fourteenth of October twenty twenty at ten thirty, are they the two incidents you've just referred to?
It may have been, I think it was another one. I can't remember the specific incidents, I'm just trying to recall.
Is that something you can look for for us and provide to the commission?
I cannot, I know that one of those was definitely on, you have the fourteenth of October twenty twenty, is that one of the ones that you said?
Yes, it is.
Yes, so that was one of them, and the ninth of July, did you say?
Yes, I did, yes, that's correct.
And would you like further information in regards to that? Would you want me to talk to the incident on the fourteenth of October?
I'll ask you to provide to the commission, to the extent it's not already been provided, any details with respect to those two incidents of physical restraint and also to check to see if there's been any more which haven't been recorded in this table, please.
I apologise, counsel assisting, I'd be reluctant to interrupt, but can I draw your attention to the bottom of page five of the entry which is TL four to our numbering? And I think that's a further occasion to which, of the twenty-second of June twenty twenty?
Yeah, so quite right, thank you, Mr Jacoby, I did have it highlighted and missed it, so there's three there. Mr Langcake, can you just take the last question and alter it, so as to check to see if there's anything more than the three? Thank you, Mr Jacoby.
Dr Melaphon, I am observing the time and noting what we have to get through today. I wonder if there are other matters you would like Mr Langcake to provide additional information? They could be provided in writing so that he has an opportunity to respond, we can move on to our next witnesses.
Quite so, there's just two more things I need to ask Chair, if that's okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Can I ask Mr Langcake, who is it within Alice Springs who approves the administration of PRN medication?
Okay, so there's a PRN protocol which sets out the circumstances when that medication can be administered. We have an on-call service, the twenty-four hour seven service, that's staffed by someone in the management or clinical team. And the staff members working with the client are required to contact on-call if there's any suggested use of PRN medication. Those conversations are had between the staff member, working with the client and the on-call person.
Okay, and so the, sorry, just so I understand, the on-call person, that's not the occupational therapist, it's somebody else?
There's a number of different people that could be the on-call person. So there's, yeah, the members of the clinical team and management team.
All right, the last thing I want to ask you about is the transition plan for Winmarti, D R C dot double nine double nine dot zero zero two seven dot zero one nine zero. While that's coming up, you're aware that a transition plan has been developed for Winmarti?
Yes.
Okay, and that was developed seventeen July twenty twenty, is the date of the document we have?
Yes, I've got that in.
Okay, and you're one of the stakeholders in that transition plan?
Yes.
Can you go to page sixteen, which is dot zero two zero five?
Okay.
And I want to take, this is about stage three progression criteria to stage four. Do you know what the plans are for the provision by the FDU of the treatment programs demonstrating increased capacity, do you have direct knowledge of that?
Yeah, so that's detailed in the behaviour support plan. So there's a number of skill development areas included in that plan, as well as a number of other different areas that are addressed.
All right, so that's where we find the answer to my question, is it?
I believe so.
Right. And in respect of the stages after that, four and five, some aspects of it involve an interplay with the NDIS. Do you have an active role in that respect?
In liaising with the NDIS?
Yes.
So that would be a duty of the case manager, but ideally I would like to be involved in those meetings as well.
Right, but currently there aren't active steps with respect to NDIS service provision transitioning into the community, is that right?
No, that's not what I was saying. My understanding is that there's meetings that are pending regarding the NDIS package. There was a review done, unfortunately we weren't involved in the last review and we've been contacted by my voice around that next meeting and I will be present for that meeting.
All right, finally, there are some emails before the commission where FDU staff, NT health staff have engaged with the NDIS suggesting double dipping in terms of NDIS service provision, have you had anything to do with any of that?
Sorry, could you repeat that question?
All right, there are some emails before the commission in which NT health staff have engaged with the NDIS suggesting that NDIS allocation, which was around a hundred and fourteen thousand, involves some double dipping or doubling up. Have you had anything to do with any of that?
Am I able to see that email so I could provide comment on it?
Certainly, look, Chair, I appreciate the time, I might, we might deal with this particular question in correspondence, if that's okay. I just realise how late in the day it's going to be.
Yes, I think that might be a good idea, Dr Melaphon, thank you. Does that conclude the questions you wanted to ask Mr Langcake?
It does.
Thank you. What I will do, Mr Langcake, is ask any of the commissions if they have questions of him and then I'll invite the Council for the Northern Territory, I'll invite him to ask any questions he may have. So first I'll ask Commissioner Mason, do you have any questions, Mr Langcake?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I was just interested in the Aboriginal liaison officer, that position and it's seen already at the forensic unit, where it sits in the structure.
Okay, that position sits under myself. Yeah, it's not, it's separate to the other positions, so it's supervised by me, not by any of the ship supervisors or co and that's directly under me.
And the change of title from mentoring to liaising, was there, was there some thinking behind that?
I'm not sure. Previously, that was before I was in any management position. I'm not sure what the reasons were for calling it a cultural mentor. Same fitting at the time as a support worker and as a supervisor, but I'm not sure why the title changed. And the responsibilities, I'm not sure the difference between them.
And based on the training provided through the Department of Health around cultural awareness and cultural competency, what's your understanding of cultural awareness and cultural competency within the forensic disability unit in terms of service provision to First Nations people, what do those terms mean?
So, sorry, which terms, if you could repeat?
Those terms, cultural awareness and cultural competency in the context of the training, but also the provision of service by staff to First Nations people in the forensic disability unit. What's your understanding of those terms?
Yeah, so there's a number of different Aboriginal groups. What we do is tailor things to the individual clients and require input from those clients, family members to be able to be flexible in the way that we do things and sort it.
So the question I was asking is what's the definition of those two terms, cultural awareness and cultural competency?
I can't tell you off the top of my head the definitions of those terms. My understanding is that all aspects of the client's life and culture are considered with the way that we develop and care for that client.
They're pretty important terms in creating an environment for First Nations people to have a strong sense of cultural security. And to not have a working knowledge, a practice knowledge of those terms as a leader is pretty critical. So just, I was just interested in understanding your understanding as a leader, your practice framework around those terms because it's a term that's used right through your statement, but it's not, they're not terms that you easily recall, can recall around the definition. So thank you for that.
I think I do have a good working knowledge, I can't recall the definitions of those terms, but culture is something that's embedded in the way that we do things and we try to be flexible and responsive to cultural needs.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Mason. Commissioner Atkinson, do you have any questions of Mr Langcake?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner McEwan?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple of things, Mr Langcake. The new behaviour support plan that came into operation at the end of January, are you familiar with it?
Yes, I am.
As far as I can tell, the only reference to culturally sympathetic programs for Winmarti is towards the end when there's a sentence that reads, improving Winmarti's quality of life through increased access to family, homeland, homelands and culturally appropriate person-centred activities. Am I right in thinking that that's all that the behaviour support plan says about culturally appropriate person-centred activities?
No, that's not correct, there's a number of different cultural considerations throughout that plan, including activities.
Mr Langcake, give me a couple of examples from the document, please.
Activities that are included in that, cooking kangaroo tail, damper, Billy tee. There's different activities like painting and access to spending time with a dog, bush walks and long drives, there's a number of other examples of activities. Also included in there is R and D language and sign language and teaching functionally equivalent behaviours around the use of those words and signs.
I thought you said that there wasn't much language training going on within the unit.
I don't think that I said that. There's language involved at all of our team meetings and it's included in the behaviour support plan.
All right, thank you very much. I will ask Mr Jacoby, do you have a question to Mr Langcake?
Commissioner, I don't. I'm going to take up, I hope, the invitation from counsel assisting. I understand that this witness has taken certain questions on notice and I undertake that we'll provide a statement that is responsive to those matters at a time that's agreeable either to your servants or to counsel assisting.
I'm sure counsel assisting will be in touch. Yes, I think if, if, I'm sure council assisting will be in touch with you to provide some kind of timetable for that to be done, Mr Jacoby.
Thank you, and I hope that if there are matters of clarification which we wish to raise, and there are, there are few, uh, we'll simply address those in the statement as well, to save your time today.
Yes, thank you very much, thank you. Now, uh, Dr Melafont, I understand that the next witnesses are going to join the Royal Commission from the same location as Mr Langcake. And we need a couple of minutes to set that up, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, well, we'll take it now, uh, ten, just after ten two, we'll take a five minute break and return after that break, thank you.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned. The Royal Commission is now in session.
Dr Melafont, yes.
Uh, thank you. We have now in panel, uh, Professor Catherine Stoddart and Miss Cecilia Gore. You will find. Two written statements of Professor Stoddart at tabs seven and eight of tender bundle C. Can they please be tendered into evidence and marked eleven point one eight point one and eleven point one eight point two respectively? May I also ask that attachments to her statement, to Professor Stoddart's statements, which are at tabs nineteen to twenty-two of tender bundle E. Be received into evidence and marked as exhibits eleven point one eight point three through point six respectively.
Yes, thank you, those documents can be admitted into evidence and given the. Doctor Melafont has referred. Professor Stoddart and Miss Gore, thank you very much for coming to the Royal Commission, uh. To, uh, give, uh, evidence. I will ask you to follow the. Instructions of my associate who will administer the oath or affirmation as the case may be, thank you very much.
Professor Stoddart, I will read you the oath. At the end, please say yes or I do. Do you swear by Almighty God that the evidence which you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Miss Gore, I will read you the affirmation. At the end, please say yes or I do. Do you solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that the evidence which you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you very much. Uh, Dr Melafont will ask you some questions, just by way of explanation as to where everybody is. Dr Melafont is in our Brisbane hearing room together with Commissioners Mason and Atkinson. Commissioner, Commissioner McEwan is with me in our Sydney hearing room. So, Dr Melafont will now ask you some questions, thank you.
Thank you, uh. Can I start with you, please, Professor Stoddart? Is your full name Catherine Stoddart?
Catherine Anne Stoddart, yes.
And have you provided a statement to the commission dated fifteen January, a statement provided twenty January, and also. An earlier statement last year, twenty-seven April twenty twenty?
I have.
And are the contents of those statements true and correct to the best of your knowledge and ability?
They are.
At the time you signed each of those statements, uh, you were the chief executive of the Department of Health in the Northern Territory?
I was, I finished with the Northern Territory on the twenty-second of January two thousand and twenty-one.
Okay, and you've taken up a position in another state?
I have indeed, yes.
Okay. Uh, your qualifications are set out in some detail, were just a couple of features. Prior to your appointment. As chief executive of the Department of Health, you were deputy chief executive and chief nurse of Oxford University Hospitals. In the United Kingdom twenty fourteen to twenty seventeen, is that right?
That's correct, yes.
And chief nurse and midwifery officer of the Western Australia Department of Health twenty nineteen, twenty oh nine rather than twenty fourteen?
That's correct.
And also you have been a visiting professor at nursing, of nursing at Oxford Brookes University?
That's correct.
Is that ongoing?
Yes, it is.
And you hold a Bachelor of Science Nursing, a Master in Project Management and a Master's Degree in Business Administration?
I do.
Okay, Ms Gore, if you state your full name, please?
I'm Cecilia Anne Gore.
Thank you. Are you the Senior Director of Mental Health, Alcohol and Other Drugs Branch? Health System Policy and Strategy, Northern Territory Department of Health?
I am.
Okay, and, um, there has been a new chief executive appointed to replace Professor Stoddart, is that correct?
I'm not aware, um, there is.
Sorry, acting?
Yes, there is an acting chief executive.
Okay, um. So insofar as the McGrath, McGrath report and the extent of the recommendations implemented by the Northern Territory Government. Do I understand, do you be the senior gov- government officer with most operational knowledge?
Yes, that would be right.
Okay, and you've provided a resume to the, um. Uh, commission, which will be tended in due course, but just briefly, you hold. Um, a master of public policy, a master of education, adult education, a bachelor of education, adult education.
I am, um, not, not yet completed my Masters of Public Policy I'm currently undertaking.
Thank you, all right, and you commenced that in twenty sixteen?
Yes.
Okay. Did you, uh, Ms Gore, uh, listen to the evidence of Mr Langcake this afternoon?
Yes, I did.
Okay, so you're aware of Mr Langcake's view? Um, that he feels he would be assisted in the discharge of his role if the lines of communication with Mr McGee. Uh, reopened, you heard that?
Um, yes, I, I heard Mr Langcake say that he felt he would like the current situation rectified.
Okay, ca- can I ask you, do you know whether that position has been communicated up to the acting chief executive?
Yes, it has.
Okay, and do you know whether that position is under current active consideration? By the acting chief executive?
Um, we have in the last month, um, twice written to Mr McGee. Once again offering to recommence mediation, um, he has, and, and that's been both directly and also through the, um. Office of the Principal Community Visitor. Uh, Mr McGee has indicated on both occasions he doesn't want to do that.
A- a- and is that therefore, are we therefore at a standstill from your perspective?
Uh, no, we're not, um, what, what has happened since the second refusal was that. There is a new senior, um, manager of the forensic disability unit. Um, she has prepared a plan for trying to re-engage the guardians directly. Um, and again, with the assistance of the Community Visitor Programme, we're going to reach out again and s- see whether that would be acceptable. As a way forward, um. Contingent upon is some step of, um, mediation or discussion of appropriate communication.
Okay, and when is it planned to do that reach out?
Uh, we've written to, we've written to the print, uh, the Community Visitor, um, I think that was on Wednesday of last week, so any minute now, I think.
Now, Chair, can I just indicate that, um, I'll ask some limited questions this afternoon, but there might be a subsequent follow-up of notice to produce to Ms. Gore, given the time of the day. Can I ask you, Ms Gore, do you know, um, what the Northern Territory is doing, if any? With respect to improving the data collection, um, of, um, people with. Cognitive disability. Uh, in the criminal justice system, and in particular, First Nations people? Or is that outside your remit?
Um, it's, it's outside my remit, um, most of the data that is being sought would sit within corrections. Uh, it wouldn't be the Department of Health's, um, area.
Right, okay. Um, can I ask you again, Ms Gore? The commission has heard evidence, um, last week from Auntie Margaret. And Laurel Stock- Stockle. About the importance of access to. Uh, Nunkaries. Yeah, Commissioner Mason, I hope I've got that at least close, for the First Nations people, so traditional healers, for First Nations people to be connected to their cultural and healing practices. Are you able to, uh, tell us whether the Department, um, of Health is or is willing to support? Um, a request. Uh, through the NDIS. For access by Winmarti to Nunkaries, right, Nunkari? If something you need to?
Oh, my, um, answer to that would be, um, yes, um, I don't know about the NDIS component of that. Um, I sit on an Aboriginal Social and Emotional Wellbeing Working Group, which is chaired by our Aboriginal Medical Services Alliance. Where, um, access to traditional healing practice and practitioners is a key priority. Um, we work regularly with our community controlled health services to, um. Seek opportunities for culturally secure practices and, um, I would certainly support. That work through Aboriginal, uh, the Central Australian Aboriginal Congress, who I understand are directly involved in Winmarti's care now. I think that would be a really helpful pathway, um, and we would certainly respond positively to that request.
Okay, so that's something that you would, um, actively support and encourage the forensic disability unit to explore?
Absolutely, um, again, within the context of, um, coordinated care, that, um, some of that service delivery, um, is best. Achieved through his relationship with the Aboriginal Medical Service in Alice Springs, but we would certainly assist.
All right, thank you. Um, sticking with you for a moment, Ms Gore, um, at, at, in one of the statements we've received from Minister Files. Um, she speaks about two forensic patients. Which were declined NDIS functioning, uh, due to high functionality. Um, are, are you aware of those two cases?
Yes.
Okay, and can you tell me if the Northern Territory Government is doing anything in respect? Of the NDIS funding being declined?
Yes, um, so both of those. Patients were, um, clients of our forensic mental health service here in Darwin. Um, they were both assessed by the NDA as being, um, sufficiently high functioning as to not require disability supports. So they remain clients of our service with access to appropriate case management. Care coordination, they can still access services through, um, other funded NGOs, um. Both of those patients are currently resident in one of our facilities and so. Have access to those day-to-day life skills and other supports, um. We, we would continue to provide a service, we just don't get additional resources from the NDIS to do that.
Okay, so, um. Is it the case that it's your belief that those two persons are still getting? All of the services that were asked for under the N- NDIS but's being provided by the Northern Territory? Do I have that correct?
No, um.
Sorry?
If, if they were assessed as eligible for an NDIS package. That would most often land in the, in the supported independent living, um, set of resource. So they, they've not been successful in, in getting that, um. We, however, are providing their accommodation and the range of services that we are able to provide. As we would usually provide, um, it's not a direct comparison to what's available in NDIS packages.
Okay, so it's not the case that, um, uh, appeals processes or further engagement with the NDIS to seek to get them to change their position is. Something that the Northern Territory is undertaking?
Uh, not with these two, um, clients, we have done that in, in previous historical situations.
Okay, i- is that because Northern Territory Health are agreed with the reason for ineligibility? Given by the NDIS, that is high functionality?
Yes.
Um. Professor Stoddart?
Yes.
Uh, you'd be obvious, you are obviously familiar with the McGrath report?
I am, yeah.
Okay, um, now, one of. Uh, the suggestions in the McGrath report. Is that a person not guilty by reason of mental impairment, who is not criminally convicted. Should be, uh, managed by the Department of Health. And should be eligible for NDIS. So I ask you as a person, uh, with thirty years in nursing and experience across the industry. Is that something you agree with, both of those two things? One is that they should be managed by health and two, they should be eligible for the NDIS?
Um, so in terms of the McGrath review specifically around, uh, mental health. Um, but I would agree, there is a role for health in, um, providing the ongoing support and therapeutic environment, um, that group of clients, but they're still. Currently set as part to our clients under the criminal code, so we need to make sure that. Um, for that part of it is obviously other agencies that are involved in that including corrections, but there's definitely a role for health oversight.
Yes, okay, so I, I'll just come back to the question, Professor Stoddart, because. I'm not asking you as a representative of the Northern Territory because you're not there anymore. I, I, I'm asking you as somebody who's worked in the field for thirty years. Do you agree with both those things? They should be managed by. Health as opposed to a corrective services department, and they should be eligible for NDIS? Is that something which you agree with philosophically as a matter of?
Philosophically, health as, uh, the overarching organisation, I think, has a significant role to play, so I would agree with that. In terms of the NDIS, um, there is a difference between those that are on a non-custodial order versus a custodial order. In terms of how health might interact, I think, because often. Those under a custodial order may be in prison or secure care, and we do provide the therapeutic environment. But we have a bigger role to play, I think, in those that are in non-custodial care.
Yeah, but again, coming back to the principle of it. Do you see an importance for the NDIS to be providing services? To people who are found not guilty by reason of mental health impairment, to assist them, to support them in their pathways?
So, um, speaking in my own role as, as myself, I would say that the NDIS. Has a real opportunity to provide a broader range of activities, services, um, individualised care. Um, for that group of clients, so it would be very useful.
If I, if, when I read your statement, I, I may be misunderstanding. But if a supervision order is made by a court in the Northern Territory. In respect of somebody who is found not guilty by reason of mental impairment, it is the health. Department or however you describe it, that's responsible for the custody, care and treatment of that person, is that not right?
That's correct, it's under the care of the CEO with other agencies having input, that's correct.
So, in your answers. I- in your answers to Dr Melafont, are you effectively agreeing with the current position in the Northern Territory?
I am in fact agreeing with it, yes.
Right, all right, well, let's see if we're going to advance from there. Yes, Dr Melafont?
Why?
Because, uh, so why, why, why should health, um, lead? Um, there has, the use of the part-to-way orders and health having oversight of those, um, clients. Has meant that we can provide a therapeutic environment and see transition of clients. We've got, uh, forty-seven clients currently. In that environment and a large number of them, thirty-four of those have moved into, um, a transition. Into more independence and further into the community, and I think that's a significant role that helps to play.
Um, Ms Gore, can I ask you this? Uh, does the Northern Territory intend to provide step-down, secure, community-based accommodation? For persons like Winmarti?
Um, this. In part, it's difficult to answer that on behalf of the entirety of the Northern Territory, um. We at Northern Territory Health are tasked with providing the treatment and support for people. The provision of specific housing and accommodation, um, sits across a number of departments. Um, I think that what we've seen in the last two years as the NDIS rollout has reached. Greater strength in the territory is. Resources are coming to the territory which have enabled, um, community-based providers to establish. Sorry, to establish a range of community-based housing options, and we have in fact got a number of our clients in. Um, other forms of community housing in quite remote locations like Tennant Creek. And on the Tevi Islands, in a mixture of social housing options, so. Right now, um, I'm not seeing a demand for a specific step-down secure facility. What we're seeing is an intention to move people further into community-supported, independent living arrangements. That might involve in-reach supports, regular visits, family structures, um, but not so much the subacute. We're not, we're not seeing the demand in our current population.
Ms Gore, can you, can you help me understand, uh. How what used to be a somewhat fragmented system in the Northern Territory works? You said, I think you or Professor Stoddart said there were forty-seven people in a particular category. What's that category? Are these people? What's that category? Are these people who've been found not guilty by reason of mental impairment or have been found, uh, unfit to plead? Is that the cohort we're talking about?
The, the, yeah, the forty-seven are those people who are currently under supervision orders as a result of Part II A findings through the criminal code. So they're either on non-custodial supervision orders or custodial supervision orders. Um, currently, they are managed across the two services. So the forensic disability unit and the forensic mental health service.
The, the division is according to whether they're in custody or not in custody?
No, the division, um, relates to, um, the functional assessment. So, um, there are people who are clients of the forensic disability unit because of the definition of disability. And there are clients of the forensic mental health team, um, who are unfit to plead due to mental impairment.
The forty-seven, how many of those are First Nations people?
Um, I would need to double check my figures, but all of the forensic disability clients. So I think there are thirteen of those currently, um, and the overwhelming majority of the forensic mental health ones as well.
We've been talking about culturally appropriate services. Um, can you at least help me? What are the facilities that are available to provide culturally appropriate services to this cohort of forty-seven or however many of them are First Nations people?
So I think that there's a few different initiatives underway. And I, I would bring, um, up the, um, the Territory's development of the Aboriginal Justice Agreement. It documents this issue in great detail and actually puts a roadmap together for government around things that we should aspirationally be doing. Um, stepping back to what we're currently doing right now, um, what we did last year as one example was, we have a facility in, um, Darwin which houses, um, all currently Aboriginal men on non-custodial supervision orders. And we transitioned that service from a health, the government service to a non-government service provider. Um, that non-government service provider has, um, a much higher proportion of its staff in our Aboriginal people from this, this line. Um, it also has, um, opportunities to link in with cultural elders and be a much more community-focused approach. Um, that, that transition took us the best part of eight months to make sure that we were doing that in a clinically safe way as well as in a, in a sustainable way in terms of the resources. Um, I think you've read in or heard from Mr. Langcake this morning, um, our commitment to these interpreters, um, trying to increase the, the presence and engagement of people from country in our services. Um, we've developed a range of outreach programmes and in-reach programmes. Um, and we do try and work really closely with agencies like NARJA, with our Aboriginal Community Controlled Health Services to change the way we do service and change the starting point of that service.
Thank you.
Can I just take you to the point about interpreters, Ms. Gore? Is the expectation that interpreters will be used, um, to assist, say clinicians engaging with a patient? Is that the expectation for interpreters?
Yes, um, sorry, I'm hesitating because it's a little bit of a nuanced answer. Um, we, we did some work last year with the Royal Darwin Hospital around the types of information that people needed once, when they presented through a hospital setting. Um, and tried to work out how to best mobilise the resources we've got. So some, some of the information, it's entirely appropriate for the, a family member or a friend to be the person who helps the engagement of the clinician. Sometimes it's another well-trained staff member. And then when we're at really sensitive areas of consenting and those kind of things, we need a formally trained interpreter to assist the clinician in their communication. Um, in our services, I think we have a similar sort of, um, nuancing of, um, what we'd like to do is build the capacity of our staff to be able to communicate effectively all of the time. And to then bring interpreters into the room. And, and I have to say just out loud, um, COVID has let us use telehealth and phone and FaceTime interpreters in ways we've never imagined before, so we're increasing access in that way. But, but we need to, um, really be led by the client as well around what they would like to see in terms of assistance and communication. Um, and in some of our remote communities, it's really difficult because then there's privacy and family relationship concerns as much as there is worries around being understood properly.
Okay, so I, the, the reason I ask, Ms. Gore, is you wouldn't expect an interpreter to be booked just so, say, say, somebody like Winmarti could have a chat with somebody in his own language? That's not your expectation as how interpreters would be utilised?
No, that, that wouldn't be how I'd expect interpreters to be utilised.
All right, thank you. Um, Ms. Gore, um, NT Health's twenty nineteen response to the Maghra report um, noted that specific training in forensic work would require provision of such training by an education provider. And there's no current programme available nationally. To your knowledge, is it still the case that there is no forensic work training programme which is culturally appropriate in the Northern Territory or nationally?
It is my understanding that there's not an accredited training programme available nationally. Um, what I am aware of though, again, through the work of our Attorney General's Department in the development of the Aboriginal Justice Agreement, is, um, they've developed uh, an alternative to prison programme in Alice Springs, which has a really strong focus on criminogenic factors. And they're using that development of that service to try and bring together, if you like, a training package for some of the human services providers in Alice Springs. And I think that that has massive potential to actually become something really valuable, not just for that service, but across the Territory and in fact around Australia. Because I think that understanding around what are the criminogenic things that we need to address as well as the mental health concerns or the AOD concerns or the functional disability, that's a really big missing piece. And I think it's a, it's a fantastic initiative that, um, will hopefully, um, continue.
Okay, what do you need to make sure that that can be rolled out?
Well, I have what I need, which is I have a, a really good working relationship with the person who's leading it in that department. Um, I think what we need across government is broad understandings of working with a person holistically, um, that people don't live single-issue lives. And I think often what happens is we start at it's a mental health client or it's a person with a disability or it's a person who's got addiction. And then we get stuck in our service system. And I think what we can do and should do, and that's again the leadership of the Aboriginal Justice Agreement work, is to take a view which is, we've got a range of social problems which are determined through poverty, trauma, racism, poor resources, dispersed population. Let's tackle them as a complex problem and get all the bits to help, rather than trying to give the responsibility just to one area of the service system. I think if we did that, then it would be much easier for me to say, I want all of our staff trained in criminogenic factors, not just the ones who are working in the forensic disability unit.
All right, a- and that speaks to, doesn't it, the need for a whole-of-government coordinated approach to the issues that we're seeing?
Very much so, very much so. But I think just to note, again, I'll just keep plugging it. I think that what we want government to pay attention to has to be big enough so they can't just keep putting it back in a corner. And that's why I think in the, just particularly for the Northern Territory, the Aboriginal Justice Agreement process is a really big piece of work. And it picks up the intersection of people in the justice system. It notes cognitive disability, it notes the huge impact of early hearing loss. It notes structural racism, social poverty, as all big factors that need to be tackled whole of government. And I think that's what will give our service system the foundation it needs to really make a difference.
Okay, and I take it you're of the view that the over-representation of people with cognitive disability in the criminal justice system, in particular First Nations people, and in respect to forensic, the forensic system, is such a big item that it cannot, in any good conscience, be put into the corner. You'd agree with that?
Absolutely. And, and Health, Health gets to pick up the pieces and try and provide treatment and care for people. What we need is some real upstream work that, that tackles these problems at a community level, at a prevention level and at an early intervention level, and that is cross-government.
Thank you. Professor Stoddart, you've been nodding.
I'm nodding to disagree, isn't it?
No, that, that's good, nodding in agreement. Let me get that on the record. Is there something you'd like to? Is there something you'd like to add to the response by Ms. Gore?
Um, I think that, um, Ms. Gore probably covered all of it, other than to say that the whole-of-government, um, focus has been the work, um, of the Children and Families Standing Committee, um, in the Northern Territory over the last four years. But it's embryonic really in terms of the whole systems approach that, um, Ms. Gore's been talking about. But some inroads have started, and I would support.
All right. Can I put this to you both? That unless we break down the barriers that exist from department to department, we're not going to get to where we need to get to in terms of transformational change in Australia for people with disability, with cognitive disability. Are we agreed?
Yep, agreed.
Two nods? Okay.
Yep.
Can we translate those two nods into some practical action in the Northern Territory? Professor Stoddart, you're a bit, you're a bit freer to talk, I imagine, than Ms. Gore, because you're, you're fleeing the jurisdiction.
I am, but I might see you with Western Australia, yes.
What, what, what has to be done as a practical matter to bring this about? The description to someone un-tutored in these things, as I am, that is to say, the governmental arrangements within the Northern Territory gets the impression of considerable fragmentation. You've said there needs to be a whole-of-government approach. What does that actually mean in practical terms? What needs to be done?
So one of the first steps that's happened has been a minister for Disabilities, which is in recognition that it is a whole-of-government approach, that it needs that leadership and, and that has been provided. The other piece of work that's happened that is, as I mentioned, has focused on children and families, which is across government work in the human services. So that includes police, education, health, communities, disability, all of those factors, working together and looking at the data so we can see where the areas of concern are. So is there a hotspot in a particular region where we might have children who are not attending school, we might have increased hearing loss? We could have extensive family domestic violence. And that work has been happening over the last four years so that we can work out at the prevention end where we should focus. I think it, it's one example of, um, a system that's working. But in saying that, the big partner in the Northern Territory is the Aboriginal Community Controlled Sector and the Aboriginal organisations. Because they provide, in the, in terms of Health, they provide the, a large majority of our primary care really well to remote communities. We do some of it. But there's also other Aboriginal Community Controlled organisations. And working out, the, the part that's probably missing that we try hard to do is pulling, um, all of us together so that we're actually focusing on the same thing. Because we've got different, as you know, we have different funding environments between Commonwealth and state that can be, um, create fragmented, um, services and, and different agendas, frankly. And so I think, uh, that is an element of it. We actually have been working on this specifically around mental health with the Aboriginal Community Controlled Organisation and the Northern Territory PHN to try and have a joined-up approach to mental health. Uh, so not just a government agency, but the, the broader whole of system. I hope that answers your question.
Is there a protocol of some kind or a methodology for involving the First Nations-controlled organisations within these governmental decision-making processes?
Um, there is in the Northern Territory. There's two forums that come to mind straight away. Obviously, oh, three actually. The Aboriginal Justice Agreement involves significant, um, mechanisms of consultation in a structured way that has seen a really good outcome. In terms of Health, and I'm saying this fragmented again, of course, um, uh, Health has a forum where all, uh, the peak body of Aboriginal Community Controlled organisations works with Health and the Commonwealth to get joint agreements. And, um, there is also a forum called the Tripartite Forum, which looks at whole-of-family and children risk factors and brings together the Commonwealth, the jurisdiction, the Northern Territory and the peak bodies of Aboriginal Community Control. So there are mechanisms, it's, it's early stages.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Gore, I wa- I wondered, uh, I didn't want to cut you out, whether you had anything to add bearing in mind that your approach may be a little more circumscribed than Professor Stoddart.
Um, I think that, um, Professor Stoddart's covered the big-ticket things. I think that, um, a very practical example which is currently occurring is in, um, Catherine Region, where, um, we've been doing some redesign of what services are available to whom from what source of funding with the, with the PHN, with the National Indigenous Australians Agency, um, to go, we need more preventative work. With, so we need, and, and started from a problem around, we want to reduce, um, unnecessary acute mental health retrievals by care place. Um, and rather than looking at how much more money we could spend on funding care flight to bring people out of Catherine, it was how do we engage our local Aboriginal organisation to increase social emotional wellbeing programmes? How do we change our funding mix so that we've got more people available after hours? Um, how do we engage hospital staff so that they are more confident in responding appropriately? Um, and how do we put some liaison officers in that setting? Um, so it's that really practical, local, on-the-ground, bringing together to coordinate effort and change what we're currently buying from services which will have that long-term change.
Uh, Ms. Gore, can I ask you, was there anything you disagreed with in terms of what Professor Stoddart answered in respect of the Chair's question? Any point of disagreement? All right, thank you. Professor Stoddart, I just want to take you to some parts of your, um, statement of the twenty.
May, may I ask some questions?
Thank you.
Yes, um. So the questions I have, um, relate to Winmarti but also other people who are in indefinite detention. Um, now, um, you've heard, I don't know if you've heard the evidence from Auntie Margaret and, uh, of what their wish was for Winmarti and how he would live. Um, and I imagine he's, well, I expect he's not. We know he's not the only person in indefinite detention for whom there is no alternative accommodation currently available with the services that that person needs. Now, what's the Northern Territory plan to provide accommodation and services outside that very restricted environment that Winmarti, for example, finds himself in?
Um, if, if I could perhaps tackle that, um, what we've got is, um, each of our clients is, um, on a very specific individual plan with a view to hopefully transitioning back to community eventually. And we also have, in the last year, had two of our clients have their custodial orders discharged. So they are no longer under supervision. So they, they've been on an NCSO for a period and then through the therapeutic supports and the community support, they're now living independently with no supervision order. And that could be our goal for, for them all. Um, along that continuum of service, we do have community-based supported accommodation provided by often non-government organisations. Some, some of our clients have two-to-one, um, support twenty-four seven. Some have one-to-one support twenty-four seven. Some have, um, one-to-one support during daylight hours. Some people, so there are a wide range of options, but they're matched to the needs and the particular, um, concerns or the issues for the individuals present. Um, it's my understanding as Winmarti that there are absolutely plans in place to continue his development with supports to a different space of living. Um, and in the last four years, he's gone from a correctional facility, um, locked down in a cell to now an environment where he is most days being taken out into the community, going on drives, going fishing. Um, still, in, he's not, he's not free to do exactly what he wants, but he's actually learning life skills to one day head, head to that aspirational place of independent community living or supportive community living. But it needs to be matched to his development recovery and the supports that are required.
And the Northern Territory Government will financially? And the Northern Territory Government will financially support uh whatever each one of these people need to live in their communities with sufficient support.
I think that, like, this is where I go back to, as the commissioner said before, about circumspection, is that we, all government needs to provide services within a resource envelope. And one of the unique characteristics of the territory is how dispersed our population is. We have a small population in a really big area. To be able to provide supports to people in their communities, there needs to be a workforce. And in some of our smaller communities, that's not going to be possible. Um, we've done very well with some of our clients where we've managed to house someone in Tenon Creek with appropriate supports. Um, we have one person across in the, on the islands and with appropriate community supports. But there will be some areas of the territory, we just do not have a workforce that can provide a level of intensive support and care for some of people with more complex needs. And, and we will need to look at um locating them on country um which is close to, but may not be their, their home country or their birth country.
So what, what are the plans to create that workforce that's necessary?
Um, we, we are always working with our NGO providers um to look at where our investments are, where, where some of the work is, where it can be. Um, we, we, we've done very well to increase that in the last two or three years and we will continue on that trajectory.
That's, that's a bit, um, it's a bit broad. Are there specific documents that set this up?
We, we have an Aboriginal employment plan for the NT which looks to general social and economic development in all of our regions and in all of our communities. Um, we are looking again in that non-siloed way I was talking about earlier around how do we increase the proportion of people who have, say, general community services qualifications? There may not never be a full-time job available just doing, say, mental health support. But if someone could work two days a week in aged care and two days a week in mental health support in, in that social community services, that's one of the ways we can grow our own workforce. Um, we have a range of trainingship programmes, we also interact with Commonwealth programmes in this regard. Um, with anything, it's, we have to work on an economy of scale so we can write individual support plans. And then we have to work with the realities of how much resources are available through the NDIS and others at an individual level.
Right, I, I'm just responding from what you can see from judgements written by judges who review these people who are in indefinite detention, that one of the uh extremely frustrating aspects is that um justice can't be provided to these people because there are not the services available to allow them to live uh where they need to live to be culturally safe and that are appropriate for them. Um, so I think the commission would be very interested in any concrete plans there are to respond to that concern that has been uh marked in review of these cases when they come to court.
Yep.
Thank you.
So, so Ms. Gore, is that something you're prepared to take on notice and provide a written response about?
Um, yes, we can, we can certainly look to examples.
Sorry, I don't read.
Examples, I mean, concrete plans overall as well as examples.
So if I could just repeat what, sorry, before, um, so there, I, I am aware of a range of initiatives again under the framework of the Aboriginal Justice Agreement around alternatives to custody and alternative to prison, which require a whole of government investment. Um, we at He- at Health will be tasked with providing services, which isn't necessarily infrastructure and buildings. So we, we don't currently have a specific plan which says we are going to go and establish a facility in Rammer Ginning. Um, in part because we don't necessarily know where our next client is coming from. In terms of the plans that we've got in place for the current client group, um, most of them have transitioned into supported housing in, in the NGO or private markets. They haven't transitioned into a health service facility. Um, and I, and I think that's our ultimate goal. So um, we, we don't have a current plan for a particular set of investments, but I imagine that will emerge as the Aboriginal Justice Agreement continues to get some legs.
Okay. The other thing I was going to add, sorry, is that um the success that we've had to date in um transitioning some of our or providing additional supports with the NDAs for some of our non-custodial supervision order clients will also have an impact on that because we are able to access a different way of providing community-based services. But of course, for those small number of people, thirteen in total, that are on um uh uh supervision orders where they are not, but they are custodial, there's a different range of um requirements for that. That uh needs that transition before we can really maximise it.
Anyway, no doubt you'll give us whatever plans you have.
Um, can I just clarify? So, so is it the case that there are still thirteen part to a uh clients in institutional settings? Do I have that right?
There is thirteen, yes, custodial supervision, not all forensic though of course, uh, I'm sorry, not all disability. So it's a mixture of mental health forensic clients and disability forensic clients um across a range of areas. I'll just um, um, I'll confirm that number though.
Yeah.
My last understanding of it, it may have changed.
All right, so Ms. Gore might need to confirm that number for us, if that's okay, a- a- and also where they are. Where they are, okay.
Yep.
Counsel assisting, I hesitate to interrupt, but in response to a notice issued to the Northern Territory uh in relation to closed institutions, I believe we've provided that underlying data. I can confirm that the number is thirteen and I think that that information may include a breakdown of the institutions. But uh we, I'm happy, we'll, we'll provide an email tonight to
Yeah.
Identify that page number.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobo. I just want to understand whether that information is still current. Thank you. Can I take you please to um, uh, Professor Stoddart, to your twentieth of January twenty-one statement? And go please to paragraph nineteen, there's stat dot O two seven five dot triple zero one dot triple zero one at four.
I think I've found it.
Okay, thanks. So this is this part of your statement which speaks about um the need for direct support workers to provide direct face-to-face services. Uh, and telehealth can provide for video consultation with specialist clinicians. And you speak about it overcoming some of the difficulties described in paragraph sixteen, which is where you reflect that forensic psychiatrists are a very thin workforce and traction and retention in the sparse population of the Northern Territory has been historically difficult.
Yes.
I, I wanted to ask you in order for the level of telehealth and video consultations uh that were uh able to be provided during COVID, does the Northern Territory need anything from the Commonwealth in terms of um changes of approach to Medicare uh service provision? Or is it the, is it the case, as far as you, I understand, that um those telehealth services can be provided with the psychiatrists under the existing Medicare regime?
So if I add to that, and I'm sure Ms. Gore can add further um colour to it, but.
Uh, we've lost you. Darwin, we've.
You're frozen.
Yes. Can I indicate, we'll, we'll just go around the corner and uh hopefully get everything working.
Dr. Melafund, I think we'll uh break for a couple of minutes to see whether we can unfreeze ourselves.
Thank you.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned.
Just do it, please. Sorry, we'll just, we'll just connect and carry on.
All right, I, I think we're okay, Professor Stoddart, thank you.
Thank you. Um, there, during COVID, um, there were some positive effects, one of which was um in health and particularly in remote locations, utilise technology in a way that fast-tracked access for clients. And it's, it's one of those opportunities that we want to hold on to. We did do some of it with NTG, Northern Territory Government funding. However, during that period of time, uh, the Commonwealth provided a Medicare item number to allow client interaction in a different way. The element that's missing now is clinician to clinician. So a nurse in a remote community, a um, a support worker in, at the forensic disability unit being able to access a um, a clinician, for example, a forensic psychologist or a psychiatrist in a different state, that doesn't have necessarily um the Commonwealth funding for it. And so that probably is a lever to improve access as much as a way of um reducing some of the disadvantage.
Okay. Can I take you to paragraph twenty? And it says, the overall models of care are evolving in light of NDIS supports. The importance of culturally appropriate support workers and the potential efficiencies which could be achieved by integration of the forensic mental health and disability services. What's that mean?
So uh there's two parts to that really. Um, so we have noticed that through the um evolving NDIS supports, we had very thin markets in terms of NDIS providers. As you can imagine, very small communities, one or two providers. But as we've been able to transition some of our uh clients, um, not just those that are forensic more broadly, we've been, been able to grow the workforce in some of our non-government providers. So they might employ disability um support workers or Aboriginal liaison officers. And so that has had a really positive effect. We've seen it across the territory, but maybe in the larger, larger spots, so Alice Springs and Darwin more than the very small ones. And then if I go to the second part of that, which is around trying to integrate forensic mental health and disability. The total now, as we talked about, the total number of clients that we have are forty-seven. So there's no economies of scale in terms of um our workforce, which has been traditionally separate. And it was a recommendation from the Magar Review that we pull it together. In fact, that's been, um, we've started that work in, um, for a short period of time, subject to recruitment. We have had a, a director across the combined services to look at how we might do that in a way that meets the clinical needs of the clients and does pull together the, the best of our services. Because um a lot of the way that we actually manage these, these two client groups separately could be done together.
Okay.
So that's two parts of the question.
Thank you. Can I just um go to you, Ms. Gore, and ask you whether, in respect of the Medicare issue I raised with Professor Stoddart, whether NT Health um has requested um the Commonwealth to consider expansion of the Medicare service provider so that there can be longer client appointments for clients with complex needs? And also that, that uh, uh, sorry, I'll just finish it there.
Um, I think that the, the main advocacy that the NT has made in the mental health space to date with the Commonwealth has been allowing for case consultation between more senior clinicians and frontline clinicians. Um, the, the demand is around being able to have a forensic psychiatrist on the line doing clinical case review with say, a general practitioner or a clinical nurse um rather than having to send the forensic psychiatrist necessarily to the patient. Um, and I think that's the piece that would really enhance our service systems, being able to have that clinical mentoring and case review. Um, not just um one-on-one with the client.
All right. Uh, now, this question is actually for Ms. Gore, but it's by reference to Professor Stoddart's statement. We're at paragraph twenty-six. Professor Stoddart, you observed that the development of a mental health workforce plan for the Northern Territory will be progressed following the appointment of the chief psychiatrist to the Northern Territory. Now, what's the current position, Ms. Gore, with respect to the appointment of the chief psychiatrist?
Um, the position was, um, recruitment wasn't successful um when we attempted it at the end of last year. Um, what we have, um, what we're now doing is, there's a series of other reform projects occurring in mental health, one of which is the review of our Act, um, the, the Mental Health and related Services Legislation. Um, we are planning to finalise the first round of community consultation of that in May. And we're fully expecting that that will result in suggested amendments to the legislation which would make the position statutory. Um, once that is settled, then we would seek to advertise the position again.
So what's the shortest period of time you foresee before you would advertise for a chief psychiatrist?
Um. Not being one hundred percent sure about my minister's intentions. Um, following the normal processes, we should be able to advertise before the end of this year.
So does that mean that the development of a mental health workforce plan for the Northern Territory is on hold? Until not, until not only the position is advertised, but it's actually successfully filled?
No, um, there are, there, there are a number of initiatives currently underway which will all contribute to an NT mental health workforce plan. Um, the NT Government has a health collaborative with Charles Darwin University and it has a specific working group which is on foot now, which is looking at mental health workforce needs. Um, the NT is also a contributor to the National Mental Health Workforce Strategy Development. We have a range of other pieces of work occurring in areas of priority where we've identified we need to move more quickly. Um, I think what the appointment of the chief psychiatrist does is it provides a very strong leadership for the more specific clinical part of the workforce um and to bring those initiatives together within a whole system. But in the meantime, we're getting on with what we can get on with.
Okay. A- and again, what's the least minimum of um, minimum period of time you see before you have a workable mental health workforce plan? Or sorry, maybe say a close to final or a final mental health workforce plan.
Yeah, um, I would anticipate that about this time next year would be when we would look, seek to launch something like that. Um, but it would be very much the collection of a series of strategies all pulled together into one document.
Last question I've got for you, please, both, for both of you, I'll ask you each to comment about this. And it comes from paragraph thirty-six of Professor Stoddart's statement. Can I allow, can I ask you just to read most of that paragraph for yourself? And I'm going to read out in a second the, the very last sentence. Okay, so the last sentence reads, Professor, uh, sorry, read, sorry, clients that are. Clients that are highly complex and pose ongoing risk to themselves and all their community, sorry, and all their community, will also not be deemed suitable for NDIS SILS. Professor Stoddart, why do you say that?
So SILS is the Supported Independent Living Environment and those clients that are actually high-risk to themselves or the community are usually under the custodial supervision orders and therefore not able to be transitioned into the NDIS Supported Independent Living environment because they require custodial care. So that's the key challenge between the NDIS support packages and those forensic clients that are still under custodial supervision.
And Ms. Gore, you were nodding to that, you agree with that answer?
Yeah, it's a technical funding agreement between what the Commonwealth has deemed eligible and not eligible.
All right. And just then moving on to NDIS providers or non-government providers, there's a real risk to the Northern Territory that the private sector or non-government providers will say that the forensic clients are just too complex for them. You agree with that?
Yes, without adequate funding and supports for them to provide it and all the same issues that we have including workforce, it would be difficult for them to provide it for some clients. However, the work that Ms. Gore's been doing in relation to moving some of our very acute clients out into the NGO sector would say that there is, there are options and potential there if we get it right.
And just to note that us two years, we've had one particular provider come to the territory who specialise in this area. And that they very much describe themselves as a provider who takes people that others don't have the skills to manage. And so, yes, there is a risk and it returns back to the concentration of numbers. But I think that we do have providers up here who are trying to develop their capabilities in this regard, recognising that there is a need.
Right, but rather speaks to the need for the Northern Territory Government to ensure that it prepares itself to be a provider of last resort in the circumstances that the NDIS market can't cater for these complex needs clients. Would you agree with that?
So currently, the Northern Territory Government is the provider of last resort. In fact, because where there are thin markets or at all, and perhaps some of the services that are required for our clients are not available, we do provide them where we can.
Okay, so you're agreeing with my proposition?
I am agreeing, yes, sorry.
And Ms. Gore, you as well are agreeing with that proposition?
Yes, we are already providing those services.
All right, but it's more than that. My question is, the Northern Territory needs to plan for being able to provide these services in the future in case the non-government sector simply can't. Would you both agree with that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
I have no further questions, thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll ask the other commissioners if they have any questions of you, Professor Stoddart and Ms. Gore. I'll first ask Commissioner Mason, who's in our Brisbane hearing room.
No, thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Atkinson?
No, thank you.
And Commissioner McEwan?
No, thank you.
I will ask Mr. Jacoby if he has any questions for you.
I don't, Commissioner. Again, I'll indicate that I understood a number of the questions to be asked, required, material to be supplied. And again, we'll liaise with senior counsel assisting with respect to that and ensure that that is provided to the commission.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Jacoby. And thank you, Ms. Gore and Professor Stoddart, for coming to give your evidence. We appreciate the assistance that you have given to the commission. And Professor Stoddart, we wish you all the best in your new position.
Thank you so much. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Malefond, do we adjourn until tomorrow?
Yes, please, nine thirty AM Brisbane time.
And ten thirty AM Sydney time. Thank you very much, we'll adjourn until then.
Thank you.
The Royal Commission.